Welcome to the March 9, 2015 Town Council meeting. It's just a few minutes after seven. If everybody would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marlene, would you call the roll?
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Fuller.
Here.
Councilmember Brugge.
Here.
Vice Mayor Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Yaffe.
Here, thank you.
I look one.
Before we go into our special presentation, just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank everybody who was able to come to the dedication of the Officer Scott A. Winters Park yesterday. It was a great event. For turnout, everybody looked like they had a great time once they got into the park after we had the ceremonial portions. I thank my fellow members of the council, all of the members, current and past members of the Parks and Recreation Committee, Ron Rossen, J.C. Jimenez, Randy Daniel, Marlene Morante, Bridget, Moran, everybody who's had a hand in organizing yesterday's presentation and also all the years of hard work to get this park open. So, thank you, everybody, and if you, again, haven't had the opportunity to go to the park, which is now open, please go and enjoy yourselves because it's a great place. And one other thing is, sometimes I like to mention when our residents or former residents have good events. Last Friday, I attended the investiture of Martin Zilber, the son of our former mayor, Linda Zilber, an investiture of a judge, sort of a formal swearing-in ceremony, and I attended along with Councilmember Fuller, and I just congratulate the Zilber family because it's nice when, you know, we hear about our former residents and current residents having good events. So, thank you for that. We will now have a special presentation from the Tobacco-Free Workgroup and Students Working Against Tobacco. If you would come up to the microphone here, and if you would tell us your name and your address, and then you may go ahead with your presentation. And just for the record, we've been provided up here with presentation packets, and we also have samples of the types of tobacco-related projects which I believe you're going to talk about.
Let me just open, give the address of the organization, not home address, please.
Right, thank you. Good point. Go ahead, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Adrian Leonard from Dorset Cup 2215, and I will be representing the students from Students Working Against Tobacco. We are students working against tobacco for a statewide youth organization, working to mobilize, educate, and equip Florida youth to reglaborize and break tobacco. Today, we are here to talk about flavored tobacco products now covered by the FDA. Flavored cigarettes are banned in the United States, but many tobacco products are still sold packed with candy and fruit flavors. These fruit flavors attract youth, and they include berry-flavored spit tobacco, grape- and grape-flavored cigars. What is the problem with flavored tobacco? Flavored tobacco targets new users, majority of which are kids. Studies show that seventeen-year-old smokers are three times as likely to use flavored tobacco as smokers over twenty-five. Almost ninety percent of adult smokers begin smoking as teenagers. These products are not banned by the FDA: candy-flavored spit tobacco, candy-flavored cigars, and cigar rolls, smoothes, or sticks, and shrimps. We urge you to pass the resolution to ban the sale of these products in your town. They are made to taste like vanilla, orange, chocolate, cherry, coffee, and other flavors. They can lead to a lifetime of tobacco addiction.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. I note that we do have a sample resolution in our package. Does anybody have any questions for the presenter, the presenter who are here this evening?
I just want to say thank you because I'm a little disturbed when I see some of these newer products, and I think, you know, we don't know about them, just like we may not have known about cigarettes decades ago. So, thank you very much for coming and bringing this to our attention. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
I note that there's a resolution here from, I guess this is the city of West Miami. Are you aware of other towns and cities within Miami-Dade County or other neighboring communities that have passed some more resolutions?
I know Sweetwater, Sweetwater.
If you'd just come up to the mic. We're being taped.
I'm sorry, I am SWAT advisor, Danielle Leonard. I'm sorry, I do not have the packet that you guys have in the back. There is a map, and it'll show you guys exactly what communities are doing what at the crisis back.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. A seat, yes, right here. Yes, for quite a number of jurisdictions which have passed some more resolutions.
My interest would be actually moving forward with an ordinance. However, I would like to clarify, I think it should be, at least for our purposes in Bay Harbor, it would have to be for locations and stores that allow minors in as customers. That would be the key because I don't want to prevent it from sale in a place that doesn't allow minors in in the first place. But if it's a store that allows minors, then it should be excluded.
Yeah, there is some legislation that went through last year in regards to this, in regards to, you know, banning the sale to individuals under eighteen. So, there's already been work in the legislature in regards to the same exact subject.
But are we banning them, or are we saying that if you serve children, you can't have it?
Well, I'd have to check, but I'm not exactly sure if we're allowed to actually ban it because I believe, you know, the legislation I was looking at last year had some restrictions as to what we could not do in addition to what was done. So, I think maybe our council or lobby should look and see what exactly passed because I remember talking to the anti-tobacco people in Tallahassee last year about this very same subject.
If it's possible for us, if it is possible for us to regulate it, then I think the interest, like I said, would be only for locations that allow children in as patrons.
Yeah. Well, West Miami's resolution was just out of resolution urging retailers to refrain from selling and marketing flavored tobacco products.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I think we can bring this back to the next council agenda as an update to see what we're permitted to do.
What I'll do, sure.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Next, we have requests for withdrawals, deferments, and future agenda items. Anyone?
Yeah.
Okay. This is for every item or up to, only up to item seven? Now, any item which you wish to, may wish to withdraw or defer on this evening's agenda?
Yeah.
Or if you have future agenda items that you would like to mention for?
August 20th, which would be the 4A. Right, the poll.
You want to pull 4A, the council workshop?
I want to make, I want to end up making a change. I think this is the one that needs to be edited, so I don't want to put it in the consent.
Okay.
So, that's fine. Two minutes.
Anybody else?
Can you clarify, for future agenda items, would that be in lieu of bringing it for discussion before it's for first reading, or?
No, if there's something that you, that as we're sitting here tonight, that you would like to have on the agenda for the next, you know, the month, April meeting or another or another month, that you're aware of at this time, you can mention that, and we can make sure it gets on.
Okay, I have a couple little things I was just thinking about on the way. I would like to consider moving the homeless trust parking meter in front of the new park just because I think it's a really good idea to get a little more traffic and maybe some donations, and parents can teach their kids, you know, what it's for. So, if we can put that on there, if you think that's sporty. And then I would like to consider putting advertisement for town businesses in our newsletter, like many neighboring ones do, and it would just be for our town, and I think we could actually do it and add a whole page and even save a little money. I think, you know, it would be very reasonable and could pay for itself, so I'd like to bring back some options.
Fine.
Yeah, are we discussing the items now?
No, that's for future agenda.
Future agenda. So, if there's any items that you would like on the future agenda.
I spoke to staff a while ago, actually, about a month and a half ago, about an ordinance change in regards to brownfields, and staff knows, and just for the record, I expect it to be on the agenda for the next month's meeting.
So, all right. Anybody else?
Yeah, just one thing. I was, I don't know if this is an agenda item, but I was going to recommend to staff that we consider communicating with Florida Department of Transportation to coordinate the lights on Kane Concourse because it really shouldn't take, you know, five or ten minutes to go from, you know, West Broadview Drive to East Bay Harbor Drive. So, if there's any way that we can get FDOT to actually synchronize the lights so you don't miss every light leaving your house.
It's the county.
Talk to Linda.
Right, well, it's not just, Isaac, I think you're right, because it's not just within Bay Harbor Islands, but as you, you know, after you cross the bridge heading eastbound, some of those lights.
Right, I understand that, but I'm most concerned with Bay Harbor Islands.
And others as well.
I think it's a manageable situation because there's not a lot of cross-traffic, and there's, you know, less we feed into A1A traffic, but I don't think coordinating the lights within our island would be a bad thing. I think it would be an excellent thing, so.
I invite you up, Linda, because then you're on the committee transportation. Right.
Please give me that request, former Mayor Linda Zilber, Bay Harbor Islands, former Chair of Transportation Trust of Miami-Dade County, and if you give me that request, I will give it to them. A lot of the bargaining was cut from doing that, and we are furious. And please give me the request so I can bring it up at our meeting and show them how it's made.
Okay, thanks. Send an email.
Bye.
Ryan, you got it?
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question just for staff. The community center, is that going to, is staff going to be bringing that up next month because it's not on this month? Is that?
The community center, they're actually going through materials, pricing, and well on their way.
Okay.
So, that's happening.
Okay. All right. So, there's nothing else that, no?
I hear, yeah, I mean, right now, you have a design that was picked, and now they're just going through the phases of making sure all the materials, and if there's anything better, kind of like what we have with the situation with the bridge. I think we were able to get a better fender system we were originally looking for, like the plastic fender caps, and originally it was too expensive, but I don't know why, but now we can, prices are better, and now we can get them, so.
But we're still on track, though.
We're on track.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And about the park, first of all, it was a great time, we have to say. It was beautiful, and I want to thank, again, the committees who've worked for many years very diligently on that project, but we do need to tweak it a little. We need to add a couple things and take, so does that go before parks and racks? In other words, do I bring it to parks and racks?
I can tell you, we know we're already on a bike rack. I already got something for the door lock gate, and any suggestions that, I'm sure there's going to be a few things, we noticed a few things.
All right, I'll pick it up with J.C. because.
We're all the same.
Yeah, we also weren't really significant, I think these are minor two-six weeks that administration and staff could handle, and, you know, just email Ron or J.C.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right.
One more thing. Do you think we could put council reports back at this time of the meeting? I think it's kind of a natural flow. Consider it, don't answer now.
Okay. Would you have an objection to limiting the amount of time?
I would, yes.
Because sometimes, you know, it takes thirty minutes to get through all of the council reports.
Sixty seconds.
Not bad. Okay, so we'll look at that for the next agenda. Town manager's report. Okay, just a few things. I know you're all going to talk about the Ninety-Eighth Street Park before the meeting, has probably about eight thousand kids having a good time in the water. And I wanted to personally thank two people that really had a lot to do with this. J.C., sitting here right here, had a lot of time, effort, blood, sweat, some tears. Very nervous, and did a great job all the way through. And the whole ceremony yesterday really fell to Bridget. She really did a great job from running the food, getting the tents, organizing where it was going, getting the guys, making sure that the chairs were out perfectly straight. Really did a fantastic job, and it really showed, so. Thank you both.
Hi.
I'm Gabriel.
The food? Oh, yes, and Gabriel Verrano contributed for the food. He donated five hundred dollars, so all the food was from Gabriel.
I'd like to add that Bridget was also here Saturday morning, maybe seven o'clock or earlier, to meet the county's mobile spare neuter van, so I would say, you know, MVP for the week. Thank you so much.
Woo, perfect.
Just to note, on March 31st, tentatively scheduled, the historic preservation, staff from the county, has to do a, just a presentation to the town about historic preservation, what it's about, and how to go about it, and all the ups and downs of it. We will have it scheduled for here, but if I have, if I think I'm going to get a lot, a lot of people, I can reschedule, I can move that to another location, just so there's plenty of seating if that's the case. Let me bring up today on the bridge, the bridge rehab work, although it doesn't seem like anything is going on, a lot is going on, and they're moving ahead, and I don't want to say we're ahead of schedule, but we're on schedule. A lot of the concrete has been removed almost up to the mid-span. What they are finding is the pile, the caps, which is actually the concrete that the bridge rests on, and that's the pier that goes across and the steel beams will rest on, there's a lot more concrete coming out where it's closer to the water. So, we are going to, we anticipate that we are going to need more, that it's going to be a cost item, that's going to be more expensive. We don't know right now. As they get higher off the water, it's much less, so the bridges, we head towards the water more east, there's a lot more caps that are closer to the water, so we won't know until we get there, but hopefully it won't be the case.
And when do you think we'll be done because hurricanes are coming?
Oh, this is, we have another, you know, I would say a good twelve months to go, easy. But they're moving, I'm telling you, they're moving on very fast. So, all the submittals have been going on, all the plantings have been coming in, and again, it doesn't look like anything's going on, but a lot of concrete is coming out, and a lot of, all the work is being done from below right now, so.
And they have contingency plans in case of the hurricane for the staging area.
Oh, yeah, yes, opening and closing, absolutely. Yeah, so far, we've generated just two change orders. One was a lift test. I was going to try to have it on this agenda, but we just couldn't get it, the paperwork in. One is a lift test on the bolts that hold the, they call them tronions, and actually it's the pivot points where the bridge rotates on. Thankfully, that came out good, it was only two thousand dollars. And then the other one was for shimming the lock span guides, and when you go over the bridge, the bridge actually takes a load, and when it transfers to the other vascal, there's a flex, the shim prevents that movement or diminishes it greatly. We were trying to just, you know, we were pushing off because we're getting all new shim lock guides, and everything is going to be brand-new, but because there's just too much movement in the bridge, we can't wait six months, so we're going to go ahead and do it, and that was a seven thousand dollar change order. That's something we normally would do as regular bridge maintenance on a yearly basis anyway, so we're going to have to do it.
I'm going to ask you, at what point do you actually do the electrolysis that, or, you know?
That's being put in that.
They're doing it actually at this point.
When they say put it, they're installing infrastructure for this, the web mesh that goes around the I-beans. What they're doing right now, it's hard to believe, about, I guess it's twenty, twenty-five years ago, there was a, they did a rehab on the columns, and they were very thick and looked like that's what was holding up the bridge. Actually, it's just a steel I-beam, and that application was more cosmetic. I mean, it did, there was some protection there, but it really wasn't any strength to the bridge. It was really just to protect the I-beans. All of that is coming off, and that's where the electrolysis protection is being added to, and some of the interior column work.
Okay.
The rebuild.
All right, thanks. This is my report. Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge Gabriel Verrano who came in. Thank you again for giving our thanks before you came in, but I want to thank you for underwriting the food for yesterday's celebration. Thank you very much.
It's a beautiful park, and I hope the whole community will enjoy it.
Thank you. Town attorney, any reports?
I will be getting a report tomorrow with regard to whether or not the fongs have complied with our demand letter and attitude of the RV and the RV rental on b2b.com, and so, once we know the answer to that, which I would assume is a negative as usual, we will be proceeding in court right away.
You were able to go back and reopen the same case that we had been pending before?
Correct. There's an ongoing order requiring them to comply that I kept going just for that purpose. It's kind of been like a case in the hole. You know, we've always had the issue of having to go to court, and we get what we want with a lot of time, money, and energy, and basically, I've kept this case going for that purpose.
Thank you.
Question.
All right, Kelly, then.
Have they complied with all of like the life safety issues with like the roof collapsing and the?
They did.
And the electrolysis?
Surprising.
They got everything up to code, and it was inspected and closed permits?
Yes, pursuant, well, pursuant to the county. I can't verify it or not. They've certainly been satisfied, the county. As a matter of fact, when they gave us the order, they weren't too thrilled about it. I was having coffee with a couple of those folks afterwards, who had hoped that the house would not be demolished, but they did comply with all those enough to satisfy the county. Okay, we're a different standard.
This time, it was a little different. I understand they have a vehicle in the backyard.
Well, it's no different, let me tell you. It was done, that was the same thing before, however, they've gone on to the internet and have taken it to a new level. They're renting the RV in the backyard with a lovely outdoor patio with electricity and with a hot plate. If you saw it, it's, it never ceases to amaze me, but that's what we're here for. We take care of it. We've had RVs towed out of their backyards before. We've had cars towed out of their backyard. Believe me, whatever, I'm very happy with the judge we have. I'm sure whatever remedy we're looking for, he will be in agreement with.
All right. Thank you for that report. Next is an intern update.
Last month, we talked about an intern for the staff, which is strategic plan. J.C. and I had a chance to go down to FIU and meet with the head of the Public Administration School. He basically let us know that the, a strategic plan for an intern was a little above what they would expect and recommend for an intern. However, they did say that the school would be willing to submit to us a plan for, you know, on a proposal to come up with a strategic plan utilizing one of their school's intern as part of that, part of that process. So, we told them to go ahead and please, you know, give us something, a plan, and we should have that. He said it should take a month or two for them to put that together, and then I can bring that back to you.
And they'll bring it to council for discussion?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. And now, we're going to go into public comment or good and welfare. As you come up, as I call your name and you come up, please state your name and your address, and we'll start with Susan Muck this evening.
Mayor, can I have a minute to?
Yes, I'm sorry, Marlene.
To make an announcement that whoever is interested in becoming a candidate, there's a campaign skills seminar that fires downstairs. It's this Wednesday, a little bit of short notice, but it's this Wednesday night. They're usually pretty good because it gives you a good idea of how to do the campaign accounts. It is conducted by the Ethics Commission, and this one is going to be in North Miami Beach, so it's not too far from here. So, if you're interested, the file is on the website. On the reelection staff, it's also in the news, and it's downstairs, and I'd be happy to give you a copy.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, council. Susan Muck, 10180 West Bay Harbor Drive. Congratulations on the opening of the park. I rode by it on my way here, and it was really nice to see a diverse community there. But I did have a question because I recall when we were going to put in the park, we talked about the replacement of trees that were taken down in order to clear the space. I'm not sure if it was four or six oak trees, so that's a question.
I'm going to ask Ron, the process, please. Susan, just to explain the process, we go through the three minutes, and at the end of the three minutes, so we don't have to keep talking.
Okay, so that's a segue, that's a segue into today with Paul Basil. We went to the LEAP Tree Conference in Carl Gables where there were many municipalities represented. It's really exciting, and so I'm happy in a very positive way to be up here this evening just to talk about the fact that we are having a lot of demolition on the island that includes the trees on properties, and this is really an initiative to really plant one million trees in Miami-Dade County. Some of the municipalities represented were from Palmetto Bay. Hialeah is now joining. There are fifteen municipalities in Miami-Dade County, and there are, I believe, thirty-four hundred municipalities nationwide, one hundred and sixty-four in all of Florida. One of their concerns is that although we want more canopy, there's only about fourteen percent averaging in Miami-Dade County right now, taking all the different municipalities and urban areas into account, and their hope is that there will be thirty percent in the urban core and in all municipalities. I know we follow Miami-Dade County guidelines for green space, but it can be improved, and what they're suggesting is that there is foundation money, there was a lot of diverse organizations there. It was called, I have cards for all of you, for Citizens for a Better Florida, the Million Dollar Tree Project, I just grabbed some things off the table, and the cost of not maintaining trees. And there's a symposium on March 18th and 19th in Tampa, that's a statewide conference, and just a couple of bullets as the clock ticks. The benefits that they talked about, and this wasn't an environmental committee, this were elected officials, the Forest Service was there, many agencies from Miami-Dade County were there, as well as several mayors. The mayor of Carl Gables was taking a lot of the leadership and initiatives, but they talked about the benefits and energy savings for having trees, cleaner water, less runoff into storm drains during flooding with more green space, less energy consumption, which I think there's a statistic somewhere which was up to seven to twenty percent less energy consumption with more green space, boosts property values up to twenty percent, that the fact that there are trees is a very important factor for many people buying homes today and moving into communities, and most important is it honors our community, and it makes our city more beautiful, and it's a sustainability initiative. So, I urge you to maybe think about putting this on the agenda for the next meeting and getting the information and following through and seeing if we, as a municipality, would like to join this initiative. There is, again, grants as well as private citizens, and there are some stipulations and things to look into, but I did bring an application just as an idea that they gave out for this tree city standard and what's involved, and the mayor signed it, so can I give this to you, Bob?
Sure, that would be fine. Thank you very much.
And if I can, Susan, there's already something on the agenda. I put it on the agenda, I just missed the cutoff for this meeting.
Excellent.
So, on the agenda for next month, it's already been placed, that we'll be looking at potentially hiring someone, hopefully hiring someone for a master plan for the East Island, which would include planting of trees and so forth, so it's already on there.
Thank you very much. It was important to provide this information. Thank you. J.C., while Susan is passing out the material, could you just answer that question about?
Oh, yeah. Fine.
No, as far as the oak trees, I believe there are eight to ten oak trees that we planted in place of those two or three that were, had to be removed. So, they're oak trees, they're young, and they have to grow in, but they are, we did plant plenty of landscaping in there.
Susan, I don't know if you heard, J.C.'s.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, I was answering a question. We have about, I believe it's somewhere around eight to ten oak trees that we planted to replace the two or three that were removed there, and so we have, there are plenty of oak trees that we've put in there, and in addition to the other landscaping that's there.
I have a question for Mike because one of the things that the situation was about, that we adhere to the county rules for green space. I just want to ask, I thought that we had it, you know, when someone does a new project, that the footprint has to be twenty percent, and that's the most stringent in the county, actually, so what are we doing, you know, is it, is it that the issue as far as the green space, or is it that, and we adhere to the county rules in regards to plants, you know, and trees specifically, or what?
Yeah, there's, Michael Miller for the record. We have a, we're all under the Miami-Dade County Landscape Code, chapter nineteen. We adopted a supplemental landscape code for our town several years ago, and it requires bigger trees, more diverse trees, and more attention to our location on the Berry Island versus out in the Everglades someplace. So, it's much more stringent than the county basic ordinance. As far as the open space, the county ordinance has zero landscaping requirement, you know, as far as the landscaping, it's more of a quantity of trees and shrubs and height of species. We have the most stringent open space requirement in Dade County, which is twenty percent. We had fifteen percent. We noticed that we were having a few that were looking pretty tight, and they were just falling below twenty, so we put twenty percent on the rule, so everybody in our committee meets at least twenty percent.
Good. Thank you so much, Mike.
I have a question regarding the requirements when.
I have a question regarding the requirements when property is being demolished, and I know part of that demolition plan is whether trees are being removed and so forth, so what, they remove X number of trees, there's a requirement that they replace those trees, or is that just back into the 20%?
Tree removal, the, the county ordinance has a tree permit removal process. They act as our, just like they do for most cities, except for the better ones that have their own staff, as the tree removal permit agency. They don't do single-family homes. We have, they've been doing it in the past, but they just told us they're not doing that anymore. But the, when somebody is removing trees, they have to go down to RER, which used to be called RER, and you submit, and they were pictures and a survey of, here's the trees we have on our property, we want to remove these. So they, they look at them, and if there is a nuisance tree, like a ficus or, you know, shaphalarra, you know, something like that, that's not, you know, a proper tree, you, you don't have to mitigate for that at all. If you want to take that, if you oak tree, yes, you have to mitigate for that, and they'll do anything they can, like we would a site plan to preserve that. A lot of the stuff that we, that people had in their yards in the earlier years here, we see as, you know, some ponds, some shaphalaras, those kind of things. So they're really not, they're removing more nuisance species recently, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you. Stephanie?
I have a question. With all the new homes on the West Island that are being built-
Yes.
I mean, I, I think that maybe, you know, I'm not that educated on which are the nuisance, on which are not the nuisance tree, I'm not. I think it would be a good idea if maybe we could put together something, either in the newsletter or something, saying, look, if you have these trees, you can't touch them without first getting, you know, you know, what are the steps you need to do? And these are the trees that if you're planting, these will cause you problems and why they would cause you. Something so that, you know, that, I, I, because you know what, I don't think if somebody had an oak tree in their home, they would even know that they had to not cut it down. I don't think the, the average homeowner knows what are the requirements for trees. So I think that we need to at least educate them.
On that same note, if we're gonna put in the newsletter, I'd put a little picture of this kind of tree as well, because the names alone, most people aren't gonna know what tree that is.
No, no, it looks like that.
Just the name.
You probably, if you're gonna do that, you'd probably just do an insert.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I mean, you know, as people, you know, even in the West Island, they're cutting down trees, at least they have to be aware, so ignorance is no excuse.
Yeah, actually, with the county code, a single-family home does not have to get permits. We have it in our code, under the Dade County code. You can cut down every tree on your single-family lot, and you're exempt.
Right. But maybe we can just kinda-
Oh, no, I agree, I agree. It's easy to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
One further thing-
Yes, please.
I heard Councilman Fuller mentioned something about an RFP. We finished a draft of the Street Tree Master Plan. It's been submitted to everybody in the town. Hopefully, that's being reviewed right now, so.
Sorry for the delay on that, but, thank you. Next up, Vincent Martino, please.
Vincent Martino, 1050 93rd Street. I'd like to ask the town council to please put a stop to Saturday construction. Over the last 18 months or so, residents of our condo association, Stewart House at 1050 93rd Street, and my family have been disturbed by the ongoing loud din of drills, backhoes, cement trucks, hammering, and overall construction worker noise nearly every Saturday since construction began. Our streets are crowded with trucks, families walking to and from, church services, temple, parks, the beach, to restaurants must weave their way around the construction sites on Saturdays. The noise level is constant and extremely unpleasant. It begins at 10, more or less, and lasts throughout the day. Those of us who work during the week and who look forward to a quiet, reflective day at home are robbed of this opportunity. We cannot read, relax, or rest with the ongoing noise. Our island is experiencing a surge in new construction, which is beneficial, with dozens of buildings being planned and built, single-family homes, as well as multifamily. And we're all being subjected to this for the next, what, three, four, five, seven years or more? For those of you who reside on the West Island and have been affected by construction on your side, I invite you to drive over to the East Island on a Saturday, stop by a construction site, put your windows down, or better yet, step out of the car for one minute, and imagine what it's like to hear the noise for an entire day. Then drive back to your home, call me, I'll be happy to accompany you around the East Island and show you the sights. Bob walks every Saturday, and he and I cross paths all the time. So it's, it's just something that you wanna, until you have to endure it, you don't really understand how loud it is. And if you give me a moment, I just wanna, I don't know if this is gonna work or not, and I don't wanna deliver the phone. I haven't made it, 30 seconds left on that one. But it, it goes on, and this won't come off. But, so, I thank you for your time, and I wanted to, again, just ask you to please consider, I, I know there's, there's a lot going on, and it would take longer to complete projects, but at, at what cost? There's, it's really, I, I can't, I can't explain how difficult it is, you know, to, to live with it. I hope that you'll listen, and thanks for taking the opportunity, and I wonder if this might become a campaign topic over the next, you know, few weeks. So thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Stacy Laurie?
Stacy Laurie, 9271 West Bay Harbor Drive. Since there was something brought up about the roads, that was one of my concerns. It seems that the left turn signal is no longer taking a left from King Concourse onto West Bay Harbor Drive. Sometimes I have to sit at that light, which is my street, for two, sometimes three changes of the light in order to take a left. So maybe that could be looked at. I don't know why it's no longer working.
Excuse me, Tom, we're going eastbound, right?
Going, what, no. Westbound.
Westbound.
Going westbound.
Take a left in.
Will you take a left?
To go south, to go, to turn south. You can't go the other way. The other way, so I'm thinking, okay.
Okay, so there used to be a left turn signal.
So you're heading, but you're heading westbound to go, to go left on, okay.
To my street, and there's no longer a left turn signal anymore. I don't know why. Left arrow, whatever. Okay. Along those lines, I think the building is called the Reva, that's the name of it. The valet parking is in what is, what I would consider our sidewalk. And in order to get around the cars that just double park there in the street, whether it's valet or they're double parking, I'm not sure, you have to cross the double yellow line. I find that to be incredibly dangerous, and their parking is in their parking lot, not, I'm assuming, on our streets. And along with that, they're parking their cars every morning. When I walk my dog in the morning, they park all their cars that are in their downs, underneath parking. They bring them up across the street and park them in front of the school, so that their owners don't have to be inconvenienced. Although, I think that that, their parking is their parking, and our street parking is not their parking. Okay. Along those lines, the traffic is unbearable in the morning, as it is in the afternoon, but in the morning especially. I am trapped on this island. I cannot get off either direction. So something has to give. And the, I have called the police chief about this. He did send an officer out to the bridge for two days. I think he gave a gazillion tickets and, and warnings. Of course, now I've just given up who is the person who called, because I'm sure all the kids were talking about it. But the bikes and those skateboards on the bridge are an incredibly big issue. It is very dangerous for pedestrians on the bridge to cross with them coming full speed ahead down the bridge. Then they knew they were gonna get in trouble, they got off on the other side, and then they got to the top, they like, then waited to see if they could see the police, and get back on, on the bikes. So, but when they're coming full speed ahead on those skateboards and on the bikes, it's very dangerous. I've had them run into me numerous times, bruised, unbruised. That is, is not acceptable. There are signs on both sides of the bridge. And the last thing I want to talk about is the tennis courts. With a disappointment in how the tennis program is not being run, there have been, I haven't seen nothing for adult tennis clinics. The courts are always a mess. There is garbage everywhere. The sign is hanging off. I don't know what's going on there, but I can tell you, it's never like this before. So they're not being maintained, and I would like to see that we got this new guy in. I'm a tennis player, I'd like to see us have some clinics with some things going on there for adults.
Stacy, can you find out?
Why would you look into that? Because it is important that there's adequate programming for everybody.
Correct.
And ask him, especially on the weekends, so that the people can actually-
Take advantage of that work.
I know they have some during the weekdays, but can you please direct him, if he can do a clinic on the weekends for people? And then put it in the newsletter, so that they, the residents can find out about it.
Thank you. Okay.
And I know Stacy had mentioned about the, the issue over by the Reva, you know, before, and I think we need to take a look at that.
We'll, we'll, I'll-
Because our valet parkers cannot be blocking the street, particularly during school hours. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Non, one other thing I noticed, when, you know, since Stacy Laurie brought up the bridge, now that we're constructing on the bridge, and we have those rings closed off, I noticed that there are, there are skateboarders, joggers, and bicyclers using the closed-off portion of the bridge. And, you know, I don't know if that's prohibited at this point, you know, it's, I know it says, you know, road closed, but, you know, people are using that as like kind of a launching pad to, you know, go down instead of, on the side in the middle of the bridge, and, you know, I'm sure that that's probably as dangerous as things that-
No, I agree. I'll look into it. Maybe just stop and, whether we stop and then force them onto the sidewalk for a while.
Thank you. Francis Newhat?
Due to government TDR revenue possibly mismanaged and being shown not to benefit Bay Harbor Island residents, including seniors and teens, perhaps the TDR program should either be eliminated or investigated for uncollected revenue. Why is a TDR receiver of property not relinquishing their government TDRs or paying present market value when deferring their building permit? The town plan states TDR units cannot be banked by a party indefinitely. Once a site plan is approved by the town, a building permit must be requested by a time certain one year, and extensions may be granted six months, town code. Therefore, why is the town allowing developers with minimal, if any, money down to acquire a two-year building permit extension without having to pay or record their 145 waterfront government TDRs, approximately $7 million, to the Miami-Dade Property Appraisers Office? Who does business like this? What happened to the government TDR money for new parks? Wasn't it deceiving having a dedication for an already existing costly park on 98th Street? Where's our waterfront park? What happened to the government TDR money for infrastructure improvements? Wasn't it deceiving having a costly enhancement program that still has street flooding and bridges without public accessibility and safety? What happened to the government TDR money for recreational facilities? Wasn't it deceiving to have its shared, to share its inferior community center, still not built, with outside municipalities? And the joint use agreement strictly for Bay Harbor Island residents and children has now become a PAL program? If receiver government TDR monies is not going to be collected to benefit the town residents, shouldn't this TDR program be eliminated? Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Former Mayor Linda Zorer?
That's who I am, Mayor, and I live on the West Island, 95th Street. Before I came here tonight, I received an email. This is good and welfare. I wish to share it with all of you. Car thieves are getting very smart. In the front of your car, in the window, there's a VIN number. They are taking the VIN number down, going to a car dealership, getting it cleaned, so that they can get into cars. The best thing that you can do, and especially for women, they hide in the, the backseat, the best thing you can do is take a three-by-five car, stick it down, and cover the VIN number in your car, so you don't have to worry about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul Ruthfield?
Just a couple of quick things, Mayor. Paul Ruthfield, 1231 95th Street. First of all, on what Linda just brought up, you can't color in that VIN number. You can't obliterate it or anything like that. So you can, all you can do is put something on top of it that you can remove to access the VIN number. And it seems to be flooding all over the country. It's become an indoctrination into some gangs, to get the VIN number, steal the car, bring the woman, to the police, to back to the gang. And that's their indoctrination. And if you don't think it can happen here, I wouldn't want to be the one that it happens to the first time. For what Vince Martino said, I just want to allay your fears, Vince. We have the same thing on the West Island. There was a house under construction, it took about seven months of banging every Saturday morning. I don't know what he was doing, because all it was, was an empty lot with some concrete on it. And every Saturday, he was there lifting the concrete and dropping the concrete, lifting the concrete and dropping the concrete. This went on for four Saturdays in a row. So I just didn't want you to think that the West Island was getting away with something special. I would like to strongly recommend a change to the TDR program. The problem, as I see it, is not that we're not collecting the TDRs, because eventually we probably get them, but it's the timing, and it's that the owner of the property has nothing at risk for taking more time. He hasn't paid for anything, because with the rule that we have now, he only has to put up 25% when he's reached certain milestones. That if he doesn't start building within a reasonable period of time, those milestones are never gonna occur. It'll never happen. I've noticed that some of the TDRs have been out there for two years, and the purchaser has never paid a penny. And I think that's wrong. And I would suggest that you reconsider the TDR payment schedule that's in effect now, and require at least the initial 25% be put up prior to building of construction or construction.
I want him to respond. We actually have already done that. That's under the new contract. It's been, we've been doing that for the last year.
Done that a long time ago.
Yeah.
First couple of TDR transactions, I think, that were approved had these staggered payments, depending on the stage of construction, but we objected to that, and the standard contract that the town attorney's office drew up does provide for that upon execution of the contract, the 25% deposit, which is then to default.
And that risk, which that risk, we get the money-
Not refundable if they don't comply with the-
Okay, because it was my understanding that a change had been voted on within the last year, that allowed them to take, not to have to make a payment until effectively the ground was broken.
It's the opposite. Flip it around, yeah. We made it stricter.
We made it stricter.
I'm glad to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can we put on the next council meeting about construction on Saturdays, please?
Yes, thank you.
I tried that a number of years ago. Well, yeah, we remember when we tried that. We support it. This was, this was the noise ordinance, and it, remember, it took three years, and people came and were outgoing into names, but there were people vehemently, you know, I mean, angry, you know, and we lost, you know, we lost the vote on planning it for the weekends, and the best we could do is getting a limited on Saturday, but it was... Right. I mean, this came back to the council a couple of times over three years. And we, I remember, because we were on the same side, we, we lost, you know, so...
Yeah. I might say note, I mean, I know we're going to talk about demolition later on, but if we don't put it on, if we don't deal with it at this point, then I'd want to have it on the meeting for next one for demolition on Friday and Saturday. So we'll just, we'll see how we deal with it.
All right. So we'll have that in the April agenda.
Well, why don't we do this, since there seems to be more of a consensus than there was last year, why don't we instead have as discussion, why don't we have it as first reading to, for next meeting? Can we do that?
Yes.
All right. So put on for first reading next month.
That'd be just changing the hours of construction to eliminate Saturday as a fraction?
Yeah, just like... First reading. Right. Thank you.
Jeffrey Koster?
Jeff Koster, 1135 103rd Street. I speak for myself. I don't represent the building that I live in. If you're a property owner on Bay Harbor Islands, your buildings are in danger and you're in danger. The preservation board, the way I look at it, is out of control. I was down to one of the last meetings, and those people who were in favor of preservation were allowed to speak. Those of us who were opposed to it were cut off and not allowed to speak and not allowed to make our thoughts known. Our building, we have 35 unit owners, three of those unit owners, two of whom do not live full-time in our building, one who drives a Ferrari and just comes over here to get away from the kids. Put our building up to be considered for designation for an historical, for an historic building. Anybody on our island who lives here, right, we have what, five or 6,000 people here looking into town? Anybody, if you have a multi-unit building, three people can have your building listed. And I urge everybody out there, and people may be watching this program now, to educate yourself what happens when a building is landmarked and what would happen to a town, our town, if they turn it into a historic district. You don't want this turned into a tourist place with buses and people coming down. And you landmark your building, it becomes just another level of governmental bureaucracy handling your property. We had a gentleman here at the last Good and Welfare who said that he was being kicked out of his building, the building where I live, and he doesn't know where he's going to go. I just want to point out that he is one of the unit owners that signed and agreed for the sale of the building. So for those of you who are property owners, educate yourself. The preservationists know how to contact each other and they make a good front, but there are a lot of other people out there. Be careful of what's going to happen on the island. Thank you.
Ron? Just to update us on the upcoming schedule for the next couple of months for the Historic Preservation Board?
Next Wednesday, the Historic Preservation, County, the County Historic Preservation Board will be meeting. I'm not sure of the location. Usually they meet in the Clark Center. The last meeting they had it in a different location. But they will be considering two properties in Bay Harbor Islands, the Continental and the Bay Harbor Club, which is both located on 103rd Street. As it was just spoken to, a few people from those buildings asked to have the buildings designated. What happens is a report that has to be generated from the county staff, and that should, that is, that might happen in the March meeting, which is next Wednesday, 2:00 is the time of the meeting. If that happens, if a report is accepted, then a moratorium is placed on those buildings that nothing can happen to them. And then the following month, they vote to, to proceed whether to designate the building as historic. Currently, the county staff is completing a survey of the entire east island for, to see if we're, you know, I, they talk about a historic districting of the, of the island. Obviously, if your building is, there's no building on your property, it doesn't apply to you, but if you're somebody who has an older building, it would apply to you. So they're, they're going through the entire inventory of properties, and at that time they will, they will go through the report if it's accept, you know, through the survey, then they will discuss if a report should be generated to designate the island as historic island. So it is good to keep yourselves informed.
Ron, I have a question. Mr. Koster made, made a serious allegation that I wasn't at the meeting, you were at the last meeting. Is that true, that certain individuals were allowed opportunities to speak and others were not?
Everyone was given an opportunity to speak, myself, Frank, and there were several others. I would say that if you were, if you were prohistoric, you were given a little more time and leeway to get to your point, if you want, or if you were just, myself, I wasn't for or against, I was just merely, I really was upset that the notice of what was on the agenda was not really posted. Bay Harbor Islands was on that agenda, and these properties kind of came up, and you were just, you know, and that was it. Everybody got a chance to speak, but whether you were really being heard, that was, that was another point. I'm not sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Juan Yarena?
Juan Yarena, Bay Harbor Club, 1155 103rd Street, and I want to affirm what my neighbors have said about concern with noise and demolition, and I think that you will address this matter. I think it's a simple one, and it's one of establishing some rules that don't hurt development, because you have to have development, but at the same time, maintain a quality of life for those of us that remain, that are here for the time being, anyway. The other thing that I really wanted to talk about was two items regarding quality of life on the island. And those are, these islands were developed in the 40s and 50s, and thought about pedestrians and bicycles and things wasn't really a big thing back then. Cars were mostly the vehicle of movement, but there's a movement back to health, healthy activities. And this is a really unpleasant place to walk or to bike. The cars barrel on you, there's no barrier between you and the cars, and it can be very expensive to really fix that, but there's other options that could be cheaper. And some of them are setting up some one-ways, possibly, on parts of the east and west Bay Harbor Drives, not the entire stretch, because you need access to... But I do have a plan in mind for that, and I will present that. I'll talk to the town manager about it to see what they think. I don't think it would be anything novel. I'm sure it's been looked at in the past. The other thing is water access. And all residents here should have water access. And by water access, I mean the ability to put, to do some water sports, not just go to the water and look at it, but to be able to put something in the water. I know that Miami Beach, for example, tells new buildings, in some cases, a certain distance apart, to create an access to the beach along the property line, and it's designated much like our gateway code is designated. So I encourage you to look at this. The town manager can look at it. That's a possibility to have some, because the waterfront is gone, and as one of our neighbors says, where is the waterfront park? I'm not sure we'll ever have that, really. So if we're not going to have that, then let's get some access.
Well, that is actually, I'm sorry to interrupt you. That is, had been a long-standing goal of the council and the town to find a waterfront property, and I think Kelly had mentioned a while ago, also looking for a place where we could have access of people to put canoes and kayaks into the water. So that is something that is, I would say, on all of our minds. And we've always been very serious about it, but, yeah, you've got to find the property and find the money in order to purchase the property, unless somebody were going to donate a property, which nobody's wanting to do that, so... But thank you for mentioning that. Thank you. Victor Maya?
Victor Maya, 1155 103rd Street. And I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting, and I apologize, and I'm sure some comments were made about the new park that was dedicated on Sunday, and I just wanted to express my thank you for the wonderful ceremony and everything that was, was done yesterday.
Thank you.
Building upon what my neighbor Juan was talking about in terms of access and walking and things of that sort, we do have a waterfront park. It's that top lot, you know, and, you know, can't we put a dock on there, you know, layered it so that people can put kayaks in there? So we already have the property there. I don't know if there are any restrictions that come with it and so on and so forth, but we do have a waterfront park that we might be able to, to adapt, you know, to those, to those needs. Secondly, with respect to the, to the comment about that Stacy made with respect to the individuals using the, the bridge, you know, and all that on 96th Street, but the one on, off the Causeway. We had talked about, you know, over a year ago, when, when the bridge renovation was being done, about the possibility of widening the sidewalks on that bridge. People are using the, the middle because they're scared to, to run, you know, on, on the sidewalks. It's, it's really a scary experience if you've ever walked across that Causeway Bridge, because there's no barrier, there's, there's nothing really to protect you from those cars, you know, coming as, as fast as they are. And perhaps something can be done now that we have all this, you know, wonderful green space that's, you know, on the other side so that people can, can enjoy that area. The only way that they can get to it is over that bridge, and a lot of people like to walk and, and use, you know, that mode of, of transportation, if you will. So I think that's something that, that should be considered. I am concerned about the construction issues and demolition issues and so on and so forth, and I'm pleased to, to hear that we are moving forward to try to help the residents that are here, here and now. And I think there needs to be more communication from you guys, from staff, to address the concerns, you know, of our citizens that we're not automatically told that what we have to say is a bunch of garbage, and there's no reasoning behind any of it. And so when, when we say, why is a property being used, you know, at the stage of construction in the middle of a residential neighborhood, that should be taken seriously, you know, and, and it's not. It's being put off, and you've seen the emails on them, if you bothered, I don't know if you do, but there needs to be better communication and respect, you know, for the opinions of those of us here. Thank you.
Let me, actually, if I can just respond for a second, Mr.? Several months ago, when we were looking at the bridge, just want to just deal with the thing about the sidewalk on the bridge. I did inquire about seeing if we could either widen the sidewalk or put at least a barrier there to protect people on bicycles or pedestrians, and I know that Ron looked into it, but found that it was cost prohibitive because there were going to be major changes that would have to be made structurally, at least that was what was told to me with the bridge, because the bridge was originally designed at a time period when there wasn't really thought of that they needed to have the wider spots. It was looked at, it's just not, from what I was told, it's just not possible. I, I agree with you. It would be great if we could do it.
You know, and just add to something. I know the bicycling has been brought up a few times. Right now, there'll be a shared lane that will connect from the Barrier Island to North Miami, and it's part of this project with FDOT. So once it's completed, the street will be marked, and you will be able to ride your bike in that lane, have the whole lane if you want it to do that, not, not for skateboards, but for bicycling.
Yeah. I mean, in the bridge, that's what they use. And on the bridge, I wish there was something we, I wish there was something we could do. I really, I agree with you completely, but it's just, there's not, it doesn't pair up. There's much, much we can do with the current design of the bridge.
Simply being told that it's too expensive without looking at it and seeing the specifics, to me, you know, it's, you know, confirmed, you know, and when you're spending $10 million, you know, on a renovation, there's, it, it may not be as costly as, as you may believe.
Thank you. Mary Dwyer?
Mary Dwyer, 1155 103rd Street. So again, thank you so much for yesterday. The park is delightful. Every time I've ridden by since, there are children playing, which is a joy. And Taste of the Town was a truly wonderful experience here in Bay Harbor, of which I'd like to see more. We've heard it, but I'm going to do my two cents worth. Demolition, the two issues I'd also like you to consider is they take away a lot of parking places. When that 103rd is being impacted, when the Continental goes, you're already across the street, and you've got the corner on West Bay Harbor Drive going down, parking's going to be an issue. That little lot has four places taken away for bicycles. Those bikes don't need to be there right now, folks. So we're probably going to need that parking. The other thing is just to look at that. The island is moving forward, and I've got to let go of that, but do we really have to have three or four buildings going down in the same five or 10 little place? Could it be one or two? That's the only thing, with timing. Finally, as a biker and a pedestrian and a runner here, the Parks and Recreation Committee, we bring this up often, and ADA is a big part of that, and I understand that that, we don't have the, what, the...
Digital space.
The sloping, the bridge does not accommodate that. So I understand that. I do think with traffic, because as wonderful it'll be that we have those little things in the street, if you're a biker here, most of the drivers do not respect that. So I am one of those. I am guilty. I am thrilled that we have that down to three, two lanes, and I have that lane on the bridge. I am there, I walk it, I ride my bike there. It is safe and it is enjoyable. So just be aware, it's not that we're rule breakers, it's just that our safety is really at risk, and you can't even walk your bike across these bridges. So that the growth, even down here on our little, between the east island and the west island, those are so encroached with landscaping that you really can't get a bike and a person coming the other way, especially when strollers are involved. So it's just difficult. I think most bikers want to be respectful, but they're just trying to be safe. So thanks again.
Thank you. That's the last speaker I have on... Paul, did I, is there somebody I missed?
That's it.
Paul, I'm, I'm sorry. Please. I did see your name. I must, I had it out of order. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Paul Basil, 9240 West Bay Harbor Drive. Before you start the three minutes, Stacy with the green arrow, that light was hit, wasn't it, like two years ago?
Yeah, that's one of the mast on the Bay Harbor Plate.
Yeah, working on that right now. Because I think ever since that was hit, like one day it would be on, one day it was off, so that's cool if you can fix the circuit or whatever it is. All right. So now I can do the three minutes. Thanks. I did go with Susan Luck to the Miami Dade, I guess they called it, what did they call it? It was a Tree City thing. It was very, very encouraging, and I've had lots of conversations with Kelly and Ron and Josh. Jordan, one thing that, it is good that the developers have to have 20% landscape. The key is where the property meets, meets West Bay Harbor and East Bay Harbor Drive, and that's where the residents want to have, you know, green, and so maybe that will hopefully be discussed at the agenda for the next meeting. Susan and I met the head of the Arbor Foundation, Dan Lem. He'll do anything, he'll come here. He's in Nebraska. He said, if you invite him in the winter, it'll be more than half a price. And so he would, I can give you his information. There's a company called Keith &amp; Snars that are certified engineers, planners... They're certified engineers, planners, surveyors. They work with FP and L. They work all over the county, all over the state. They can help us do an effective plan. MDX was there. Remember driving to the airport, it used to look like it was a mess. And over the last five years, they've put in all the landscaping and trees. And now when you land in Miami, it looks beautiful all the way to the beach. So they'll help us out as well. So that's kind of what I wanted to say. Susan said quite a bit. But we do want a tree canopy, which would be great. It will reduce our electrical costs, it'll make this town beautiful because, you know, the electrical cost was air conditioning. People will be able to walk, there'll be more bikers. So just, I'm very happy Josh and Kelly and Jordan and everybody that's going to put that on the next council meeting. Hopefully, people will vote for council members that want a greener island. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Right, that?
One second.
Yes. The thing about the Million Trees Miami, they're counting all those. A lot of our developments, we should tell the developer that we're part of Million Trees Miami, and this development is bringing 10 trees. This development's bringing 20 trees. And we can add it all up and say Bay Island Island's going to have 315 new trees. So we should all be involved and work together. Thanks.
Thank you. We now have a committee report from, a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Committee. Anybody's?
How does that part, he's on. At the last Parks and Recreation Committee, the committee unanimously made a recommendation to the council that they consider placing a message board, a permanent message board, not the ones that can be used, the construction ones, on Kane Concourse to advertise events meetings, other functions, et cetera, to advertise. So that for your consideration, if you want to stack two.
Please do.
Look into that. We will.
I think it's a great idea.
Look into it and bring back.
I mean, right now, what we use is a little.
The construction template.
Right, you know? And a lot of the times, people don't even know that we have events going on. So I think it's, you know, even though we use the newspaper, I think it's a great idea.
And whatever you price, please make it so that it can have more than three words at a time.
Those are construction ones.
I understand.
Yeah, those are construction ones. We'll have to, I mean, we'll come back with a plan. On Kane Concourse, there's FDOP permits and right ways that we have to contend with and space issues, because it's not the whitest of areas. So we'll have to come back with a plan for you guys.
And talking about signs, I talked to the chief briefly about some type of, you know, there's mile per hour signs out there on the causeway. And the traffic slows down a bit now because of the construction, but before the lanes were marked off, you know, without having to, you know, stop at a toll, a lot of cars are racing over that bridge. And I think it might be helpful to have a sign or two out there, you know, that records your speed, which tends to get people to slow down. Chief, did you want to address that?
No, no, please come on. Show and talk. Thanks, Matt. We ordered the signs last week. We're putting two, one on each side and one on the other side.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, so we'll, you want to come, do we need to put it on the agenda for next month and then the permanent sign, or will you come back to us with a report on the cost and the options available to us?
I'll come back with a report. I have, honestly, I don't know where to start with this. I mean, as far, I'm not familiar with companies, but I'll come and do the research and bring whatever I need.
Right, so we'll just have a report on the next agenda.
But it should also probably go to committee for the design, because it's not going to just be the sign itself sticking up, whatever, however it's framed.
Yeah, and there's certain other things that have.
Right, but just have it so.
Right, so it just gets an informational report next month.
This is the first step. Bring it to you if you guys are interested in it.
Right, right. Thank you for the committee and their recommendation.
I have just a comment I went away until after a public comment passed. It just happened to me today, but I noticed that the people that are doing the construction on West Bay Harbor Drive, you know, for the hotel, that they're using our property for their site, you know, for their site, you know? I've noticed that on occasion, you know, because they start right when, in the morning of where everyone's taking their kids to school. And I've noticed it before, but I kind of, kind of got to me today that, you know, they're making an illegal left onto the alley. Because you've got to remember that the, you know, that site is literally just, you know, 15, 20 feet from the street. So making an illegal left means they don't have to go all the way down to 95th and come all the way back. And so, you know, it's easy for them just to kind of skirt right in there. But, you know, going the wrong way on a one-way street in an alley, right, when kids are walking to school, is probably not the most intelligent decision. If we could just make a note to tell them, you know, not to do that, you know, it'd probably be in everyone's best interest.
And on that same note, actually, it's a good point, and on the same note, though, also, I believe it's probably some of their workers, they're leaving a ton of trash just on the ground, right at the corner.
Yeah, that's true.
At Kane Concourse and Bay Harbor Drive, right on that corner. I mean, they're just dumping it right there, they've ripped up some of the plants and just leaving it, so if they can keep.
Yeah.
What are they doing, man? That's like, they've been working for.
They're watering a new mast. They're regaling all controls and all the, it's actually that controls the sign.
No, I'm in the construction site.
They're talking about the hotel site.
Yeah, the site itself. That's been like a hole. I mean, there's like nothing, it doesn't look like there's anything going on there. It's pumping water.
They're struggling with de-watering. It's been an issue for them, and that's why it's taking them longer. They started their other two projects after that, and they already have foundations in. But the de-watering process has been very difficult at that site.
Oh, any idea how much longer? I mean, at this rate, a six-month could build a hotel before they will.
I have a meeting with them next week about something else, so I'll be, I'll ask them.
Yeah, please, thanks.
I know, they're trying to get it done as fast as possible. This is very expensive.
Yes, sure it is.
Right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda, with the exception, we pulled out item four A for discussion. So is there a second?
Second.
Mayor, just for the record, from now on, each item is two minutes.
Right, as we get out to the content agenda. Thank you. All in favor in the consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes Josh, did you want to?
Yeah, the only, the only change I had was on, and I had actually mentioned this last time, this was in front of us, because this got tabled last time. On the August 20th meeting, you've got on this last paragraph on the page, where it says that question lighting, I had actually advocated the lighting being, I'm sorry, not the, not the, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong spot. No, actually, you know what? Maybe I misread it. I had, I had put it somewhere else. You're right. Never mind.
And move it.
I'm seconded.
All right, this is for four.
Four A.
All right, favor.
Aye.
Pass. Pass. Okay. Item eight. On to item eight ordinances on second reading.
Approval of an ordinance on second reading, amending the town code section 23, which relates to the minimum size requirements of living units for residential development. Mike Noah had included his staff report in some proposed ordinance text.
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Bay Harbor, Orleans, Florida, many town zoning and planning code, many article one entitled zoning regulations, many provisions in section 239, to require that denser studies or converted to bedrooms must meet the minimum size requirements of living units for multifamily developments, providing improved severality, providing qualification, providing effective date.
Your motion?
I would like to move option two.
For clarification, the draft ordinance is that invited to us have more than one option. There's a second option, as Kelly said. So we have a motion to approve option two. Is there a second? Have there any other motions regarding this? Item. All right, then.
All right, well, I'll move option one.
Okay.
Second on that.
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion, see where we go with it. Michael, do you want to just give us a brief overview of what this is about?
Yes, sir. The, a couple of months ago, the, an issue came up where we, it was discovered that someone was marketing a multifamily development in our community, and it, some of the units were one-bedroom with a den. And the real estate ad apparently said that the den could be converted to a bedroom. And that may be possible, but in our code, the square footage of the dwelling unit is based on the number of bedrooms. So as you start with an efficiency to a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, the minimum size gets incrementally larger. The idea came around that if someone had a den, that, that, just as a cautionary, we don't know how many people may actually try to convert or do convert a den to a bedroom. But the idea was that if somebody had a den, that they would have to step up, if you will, to the next square footage, excuse me, to the next square footage for the bedroom. So we drafted some language as instructed to say just that, that no den or study could be converted into a bedroom without the prior written consent of the town. If a den or study is used or converted to a bedroom, it must meet all applicable building code criteria, theria. There are much different building code criteria for a bedroom that has two means of ingress and egress. They'll help us understand that versus a den, which is a small area for sitting or reading and so forth. In that, if the den or study is proposed to be increased, then you'd have to have the square footage. So that's where the genesis of this came from. So at the last meeting, we were asked to have something a little more definitive, if you will, which was alternative two, that says just that. Now, you know, the sidebar may be that if we do this, and we put some, we copied some of the floor plans that we're currently seeing in some of the projects, and the measure of the size of those, you'll probably see a shift where people won't put dens in anymore because they'd have to increase the size of the dwelling in it fairly significantly. May be good, may be bad, that's probably what's going to happen.
My biggest question on this whole thing has always been enforcement. And also, you know, in the wording here that we have, and this is where I have an issue, where it says, you know, no den or study shall be converted into town or used, et cetera, without the prior written consent of the town. But, you know, that's kind of an open-ended, you know, what are we, you know? I don't understand exactly how we'd have to, either A, enforce that, and B, what kind of consent are we saying? It's kind of a little bit too broad. Are we supposed to come bring it back each time for discussion here? Are we supposed to have code enforcement? It's, I don't, I don't mind the idea behind it. I'm not so sure I like the format that is coming in front of us. And that's one of the problems, reason I have a problem with both, you know, alternative one and alternative two. I have no problem with making sure that it has to meet all building criteria, and that's not a problem. But I'd like to hear everybody else's view on it. I just don't see enforcement.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, okay.
No, I was going to say, I'm somewhere, somewhere, in fact, I wasn't, you know, hear this, I didn't hear this on first reading, but I remember when this came up for discussion, the concept behind it was that, exactly what you said, that there was an actual project where they were kind of pitching it, where they could convert it. So the rationale behind the ordinance, from my recollection from two months ago, was specifically to prohibit that type of action. Your legislation, in my opinion, doesn't really do what, you know, what we were, at least the legislative intent from two months ago. Now, maybe last month, things changed, and I don't know, because I wasn't here. But this is not what my understanding was two months ago. There's a big difference between prohibiting developers from specifically marketing A, and then trying to figure out a way to wiggle it around to become B, and simply saying, well, you know, we're going to, you know, somebody, you know, somebody that lives in an apartment and they, you know, you know, they have another kid or whatever, you know, that's not, that's not necessarily the same thing as having a developer misuse or, you know, in an nefarious manner try to say something when it's really the other. And I, you know, I'm not trying to punish individuals that currently are longstanding residents. I think the intent, from my understanding, was to prohibit developers from trying to wiggle around what the law's original intent was. So that's kind of seems to be my issue.
And at least bring it to code when it's starting.
Right, right. And, and, you know, the thing is, you want people to come and get a permit. You want people to do it right, because when things don't get done right, there's a problem. So I'm not really in favor of punishing co-residents, but I definitely am very much against having a new project being built and trying to wiggle it around. Because when you live in a community that's as old as ours, you know, what was code back then, you know, 20 years, 30 years, 50 years, is very different from today. I think that today's standards need to be maintained with new projects.
Let me ask, is prior written consent tantamount to a permit?
Yes.
So that's the same thing? So basically, you're saying, before you convert, you have to get a permit, which really is already.
Here we come to the building department.
Yeah.
And say, then it's required.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
You know, it doesn't say it that way.
We just change written consent to acquiring a permit.
But that's already, I mean, to some extent, that's already a conversion. Any kind of work in there is already required an apartment in order, if you're going to do internal work, you're required now. But I mean, I mean, look, I mean, it's, you know, when you have, if you have a multifamily building, and if somebody's doing unlicensed work, and they're doing it without a permit, and they're doing it improperly, they put their neighbors at risk. They create problems potentially for the other people in the building. You don't want bad wiring, you don't want bad plumbing. You know, the guy downstairs below you definitely doesn't want, you know, your bathtub leaking because you had somebody who didn't know what he was doing putting a pipe in. At the same time, you know, we look at some of the designs that are in front of us that you provided, and some of them are obvious. I mean, the one that you provided, the 905, 905 square foot, where you've got, you know, there's no page number here, but it's on the one story with 905, you've got a den, it says it's a one-bedroom, it says master bedroom, but first of all, if you only have a one-bedroom, it's, you know, and you know you don't have to call it master bedroom, it's the bedroom. But the one that's the den seems to have its own full bath. So at that point, it's obvious that it's going to be converted. I mean, if you're just going to have a den, you need a half-bath if you want to have a guest bathroom. People don't generally just come over and, you know, use your bathtub. So, I mean, things like this, you know, should be red flags for us when we take a look at them, and rightfully so. But at the same time, I don't mind, and in fact, I would encourage, whatever we can do, and if you can, if you can find a way to draft this so that it improves the ability for the property owners, once they bought the condo, or whatever, what have you, to make sure that it's a proper unit size for the conversion, and they come in for the permits. It's just the language, how it's written, which is where I have the problem.
Well, here's the thing about the existing structures.
I would say, with that exception, you know, condos go up, whatever, they require, you know, approval of the board of directors to do any type of renovations or building. And typically, the building department here requires to, does it require a letter?
Yeah, we've had enforcement issues before.
Right, I mean, there are people who are going to try to get away with, without getting permit, without getting.
And people have done illegal conversions. And when we find out, if they don't have the required square footage, they're not, they can't have a bedroom. So they have to convert it back to an office or a den or whatever was the previous use. So we've seen that in co-enforcement, usually, you know, Seattle, if somebody says, my neighbor just did this, and then we go out and we find it.
Right, but, I mean, there's a purpose of having minimum square footages for one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, and so forth, and those, that ordinance obviously should be complied with. So people who try to get around it, you know, shouldn't be able to do that. So I'm not, I don't object to an ordinance.
There are kind of like three kinds of projects in my mind. You know, the existing structures that people might try to just, you know, convert without a permit, the new ones that going forward might be coming before P&amp;Z, and if we had something in place, and that would help. Then I think there are these tweeners, the projects that have been approved in the last year, year and a half, that a lot of them have one bedroom plus a den. And I know, I noticed it when we were voting on some of the TBRs, and it also came up even with the Monarch Hotel. So those have already been approved, and, you know, I don't think we have reason to be back in there and re-inspect. So it's too late to catch those with any new legislation going forward.
Well, it's just a matter, no, I agree with you. I just, my only issue is, I just want to see how we, if there are any ideas on how to do better enforcement. I mean, it's not, they're doing everything they can, but I don't see how on earth you're able to enforce, like, the one, we're going back to that 905 square foot one, you got a den, if they put in, you know, there's nothing to do there to convert it to a bedroom. They put a futon in. Unless you're coming in and tucking them in at night, you're not going to know whether they're using it as a bedroom and just turning it back. gonna know whether they're using it as a bedroom and just turning it back.
That's why, Josh, I advocate, just let's make it the next highest square footage. You know, if it's one plus a den, make it 1150.
Again, I don't have a problem with it, I just want to rework the wording. That's my issue with it.
Can we, can we...
Well, are there any specific suggestions? I mean, you want to rework it, please, I don't, I mean, Michael... That was the problem, I was trying to figure out a way that would work. Or you need some guidance. Yeah. I went through several different ways on how I thought, and I was stumped a little bit, and trying to do it so that it doesn't change anything that's currently there. That's the problem. It's already, if everybody, if they're gonna make any conversion, they're already required under code to come in and get a permit.
Mike, I think, I think the real, going back to the original issue at hand, which is something that, that has escaped the code, which is the new projects. And I, and I would be in favor of seeing, for the new projects, more stringent legislation, and that's something that you can do, and, you know, and really, you don't really need to do anything else because you already have to adhere to the same code. But as far as the new projects coming, coming forward, you know, perhaps maybe we can add, you know, a final inspection when they get a CO or something like that, but, you know, or, you know, but, you know, that's something extra you could do that makes more sense.
I have an idea. I just said one, how about if there's something where you've drafted in a way where, if there is an additional, in other words, if there's an additional full bathroom, in other words, you can't, for two, going two to three, you can't, there's not much you can do. But if there's additional full bathroom, then the den is required to be of the additional size. Because that's a, that's a strong hint that they're gonna convert that den.
We talked about that last time.
Well, but on the one, if it's a, if it's a two-bedroom with a den, if they're gonna turn a jacquins and jol bathroom, there's nothing you can do. But if it's one, if it's one extra full bathroom in the middle of the apartment, and you have a den, you know that they're gonna have the possibility of converting.
Yeah. Is there any way that, you know, for projects that are not yet completed, that have units of the size that we suspect might be convertible, or in fact, the ones that are advertising, you know, convert this to a second bedroom? Is there any way that we can compel the condo documents to say that, for that particular unit, of that particular square footage, even though it has a den, that they're prohibited from having more than two permanent occupants? Because that's what the issue is here, that one-bedroom apartment will house more than a couple.
You have a hard time doing that.
Because I, you know, because I, you know, I guess I'm getting to the stage in my life where I, you know, I feel compassion for a senior citizen that has their grandkids coming for spring break, that it would be convenient for them to have a den to house a grandchild, and let them have their own baths, because they're probably, you know, they don't want them traipsing through the bath, and, you know, after one week of visitation, that is coming back to...
That's, you know, that's, that's not a problem.
I, I have to agree with Josh. If it's a full two-bath, I think we need to compel them to be a certain size. If it's a one-bedroom, one-and-a-half bath, well, guess what? The grandkids can go wash their teeth in the half-bath, and take a shower with the, I just, I think that moving forward, if there's a second bathroom, I agree, the likelihood is, there's going to be another bedroom.
And you can, and that's something you can legislate for new projects, because they're building it.
Right.
You know, it makes sense.
I can go, I mean, I'm in agreement. I think if you have a second full bath, then you need to go up in the size, because, you know, you're going...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I've done some of the more, you know, luxury, I haven't looked at the plans of all the projects that have come before us, but some of the newer construction luxuries have his and her bathrooms and things like that, so it's sort of a, you know, I don't know if that's...
Probably won't be a one-bedroom, though. Probably won't be a one-bedroom. Well, but then they won't have to worry about the size. They'll be, uh, they'll be...
Right.
They're luxury...
They'll legislate that, I don't...
Well, if you're a luxury building, you're probably gonna be over the size of them anyway. But what we're talking about are the smaller projects, or the one-bedroom with a den that has a second bathroom, a full bathroom. The likelihood is, you know, I own buildings, and I have one-bedrooms, one-and-a-half baths, and they're about 1,100 square feet, and they're just one bedrooms. So I don't think asking the new construction, if they're gonna have two full baths, to go up a little bit in size.
But we, I'm sorry, but we can, we can fix that problem, as you mentioned as well, say that if, if the entire unit is less than, say, 1,300 square feet, then, if there's a second bathroom, you need to do it. That way, in case there is a luxury one with a his and her bathroom, that's a large...
If you just follow the square footage that we have now, like, in Mike's memo, then I think we're good. I don't think you need to develop another category.
So we were on second reading tonight, Frank. If we aren't happy with this language, does that mean we have to come back, start over again in first reading, with another ordinance or proposed ordinance? Unless you did it as an emergency ordinance, if you felt...
No, I'm not sure that constitutes an emergency.
Okay.
Well, we didn't have the language on first reading, so can we just amend this language?
But now we're on second, so I think that... Frank, did you have a suggestion?
The suggestion is you have two alternatives. If you like neither one of them, because they, they may not get you where you need to be, we just need new guidance to either Michael or myself, and we'll come back, and we'll do it the right way, so it won't be challenged. And I think you will have to redo it.
But could you come back on second reading again?
No.
You would recommend going back?
You would have to.
You have to, you have to.
I think if you want to do it the right way, and I always suggest it that way.
Well, Frank, do you have any suggestions on the language?
Yeah, I think really what you want to do is exactly what you're saying. If you have a, if you have that full bathroom, if you have, if you have a one-bedroom with two full bathrooms, you might want to add that it needs to go up to the next higher square footage. Because that's an indicia of using it.
Yeah.
If that's your thinking, and that's what I'm hearing you say, and that's an easy revision.
Do you think we could just look at option two, and at the beginning of those additions, just say, "If there are two full baths, comma, and then that language, then no den or study shall be converted?"
You know, I think that, I think the issue truly is, is the if language, if it's converted. I think what you might want to say, and what I hear you saying is, if you have this den, you have what's labeled as a den with another full bathroom, you must go up to the next higher square footage. Isn't that what you want to say? Because the whole language that, if you're going to convert, is a fait accompli.
Right.
Right? You want to say, "If you have this, then you must do that." You don't want to come back with the, "If you're going to do this, then you need permission," because you don't need permission. Once you have that and it's built, you can do whatever the heck you want with it.
Right, exactly.
Let's be honest. I think if really, if that's the objective, and I don't want to speak for anyone, then I could, it's, the language is easy.
Right. But we'll have to come back on...
Yes, all right.
Scotty Lorick, did you sign up to speak on it?
Mine is more of a question, and this may have changed, and I don't know why this sticks in my head, but didn't we have some sort of, I don't know, rule in place, that it was two for a one-bedroom, four for a two-bedroom, as far as...
Term of number of occupants?
Right. I know years ago that there was something like that, and I don't know if that changed.
It's a county, it's a county code.
County code.
I thought it was a county code, it was a code.
It's a county code, yes.
Okay.
But it's a lot more liberal than you think.
Oh, okay. So it is, how many can live in a one-bedroom?
For a square footage, it's...
Okay, so how many, well, that...
I don't have it on the top of my mind right now.
The units are made, each unit. You're acting the team, limits are not strict, because the larger you go, I suppose, the more people you can have.
Right, right. So maybe that this has something to do with that. If you can add and make it into a den, a den into a bedroom, then if the square footage had to be bigger, then it would be, make more sense that more people would live in a two-bedroom than a one-bedroom. So when you're discussing this, maybe there's, that should be, we should know what those numbers are, so... Because obviously, if it's a small unit, and you can turn it into a two-bedroom, you would obviously have, be able to have more people living in it.
Thank you. Chip Koster? Did you want to...
Okay, that brings us to number nine. I'm handing over to you for a couple minutes, George.
Sure.
Consideration and approval on second reading of an ordinance requested by council member Reed, amending chapter nine of the town code to prohibit the use of styrofoam by products.
An ordinance of the town, thanks for the town of Bay Harbor, Florida, amending chapter nine of the town's adopted code of ordinances entitled solid waste collection, and specifically adding, I'm sorry, and specifically adding and revising definitions to section 941, and adding a new section 927 prohibiting expanded polyester foam products providing for survivability for line for codification and providing an effective...
Okay, on the second? Okay, motion on the second. We have public comment. Lee Gottlieb?
Hi. Lee Gottlieb, 9625, Rutherford Terrace. I've come here today because I'm interested to find out what the commission makes a decision on this important subject. This is a green initiative that is non-controversial, and as far as I'm concerned, I see no reason that this town shouldn't pass this ordinance to protect the waterways and to lead by example. So I ask you today to lead by example and support this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Eric Watts?
Before the last meeting, we had, we had another speaker...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Watts, can you please give your name and address, Eric?
I'm sorry. My name is Eric Watts, and with Crush Recycling Solutions. Our corporate address is 16266 Northwest 49th Avenue, Miami Gardens, Florida. The last meeting, the gentleman that spoke prior or after me, he said that there was no way to recycle styrofoam. That was incorrect then, and it's incorrect now. The second thing is, is that he said that because of the waterways, you have little pieces of styrofoam, or we can call it EPS, the legal term, that you could not, that it gets into the waterways, and the fish gets in, and it bites it and eats it, and creates an environmental hazard. Well, with Councilwoman Reed, she was wanting to ban styrofoam from, at first, originally from, completely from the city of Bay Harbor Islands. Now, it appears that she wants to ban it just from the restaurants. I would like to say this. If you look at Chick-fil-A, which is a national restaurant, they have styrofoam, and they recycle styrofoam. They're one of the leaders in recycling styrofoam, and I must say that it is a successful recycling process right now. We are a recycling company that recycle styrofoam, EPS. I did bring to the meeting, a couple meetings before, what styrofoam is recycled into, life after styrofoam. There's a lot of things that styrofoam or EPS gets recycled into. We have picture frames, we have your baseboards, some, some of your eyewear frames are recycled in the styrofoam. I would encourage, and I would encourage the council members to really think about this, and see what we can do together to recycle styrofoam in your eateries and restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watts.
I'd just like to say that the, the second reading hasn't changed. It's the same intention that I've had since the first reading, and I'm also waiting to see if we can get that receptacle.
Actually, on that same note, one of the things we had asked, the first time we're up here, is not just receptacle, but how, show us the process, how we can actually do the recycling. It wasn't just a matter of having a place to drop it off, but what is a practical process? If there's a way to recycle it, and it actually works, and there's something easy for the residents, you know, we're happy to listen, but I haven't heard a way to actually have it happen. The only thing you said last time is for everybody to drop off their food scraps at town hall.
So I was, what I said is that we could find a drop-off location. I don't know what would be the proper place for the drop-off location. Our company would be willing to come in and pick up the styrofoam from those drop-off locations and recycle it. As far as having the receptacles, I can have those to you tomorrow. We just have to come up with where you want to establish the drop-off location.
We've been kind of playing phone tag. I was telling myself, Mr. Watts. Is that, you're talking about having, you know, is there a possibility for us, I mean, if it really can be recycled, is there a possibility of putting those, you know, the plastic recycling containers for every homeowner, and being able to do the same sort of thing, just so we separate plastic, glass, newspaper, and styrofoam, or?
We're not a garbage company. We don't go door-to-door and pick up what we are. We are a full-line recycling processing center. So if we can find a couple of drop-off locations within the island, then we would be more than willing and happy to come and pick it up and process.
I understand, and I appreciate the, the attempt to try and do the recycling, but what I'm worried about, quite honestly, is, you know, we're talking about, at the restaurants, for example, if doing styrofoam, most of the time, people are gonna take the styrofoam in a to-go container, and they're gonna leave. They're gonna leave Bay Harbor. They're not gonna, whether they're tourists or whatever else, we can't educate each tourist, you know, we can't educate someone who's gonna pick up a food container here and go back into, you know, North Miami, Valhalla, or wherever it is, to make a special trip back to Bay Harbor to recycle the styrofoam container at a later date. It's just, practically, that's never going to happen. So if there's a way to do it easily, I'd love to hear, I honestly would, I'd like to see what we can do, but I just don't see it working in all practical manner. That's the problem.
Okay, I have met a couple of times with Ron Watson, the city manager, to establish some drop-off locations. We have, and the last time we've been playing phone tag, I've been out of the city, I've been out of town traveling, and have not been able to really sit down and meet with him, but there has been, I mean, finding out, well, finding locations, it could be how many locations you need, we could do that, but I can't sit here and say to you today that we can provide, you know, receptacles for every resident so that they can recycle that stuff.
I'm just trying to find a process by which we can do it and educate people. Let me, let me just say one thing, and I apologize to catch up, but as I said, my, my thought is, and I'm, I'm gonna end up voting for this, but I'm always gonna be open to the idea, if you come back, we can always, if you find a way to come back to us, you know, six months from now, and there's a plan where we can do this to now recycle it, I'm always in favor of recycling everything. So if there's a way that you can come back to us and say, hey, hey, wait, I have a better plan now to make sure this stuff will actually get recycled, I'd be welcome, I'd welcome you back here to hear it and see if there's some way, and we can always reopen that, but until I have a process to recycle it now, I just, I have to support this. That's my thought process.
Yeah, and I apologize, really, it's two separate things, so, you know, we don't have to spend so much time talking about the recycling, because, you know, whether we decide to ban this or not, you know, there will still be some styrofoam coming into the town through other means, not just our restaurants, so that's like a separate issue one way or another, but...
Yeah, I mean, when, what you're referring to is the construction recycling, I mean, because a lot of, a lot of EPS also, and you're talking about a lot of your new construction, you have EPS in your construction, in your buildings. So that's totally separate from what we're talking about. I think the last meeting we had, we were talking about recycling that, that we can recycle that, but I think the other issue is recycling the actual food containers, which, I mean, we do it all, and we can do it, and we do do it all. And we're just, I think I can possibly have another meeting and try to come up with some type of logistical way to get it done, and get it done successfully, through education and also through logistics, we can, we can get it done.
Well, I think what we should do is vote on whether we want to ban for the restaurants, and I think that issue he was run regarding the recycling and also for the construction, since they're two separate things, maybe you can put a program together in which the people who are building will be able to take their waste and know either where to direct it or to call him if they have bulk of this product.
Yes.
And let, you know, as part of maybe educating the people who are actually building in our area, and giving him their, you know, this gentleman's information, maybe we can make a marriage, so to say, between the two, and that can also help the environment. But I think that this ordinance is the first step in, in, in helping, you know, reduce what we can. And then you're, the second issue is, if there is product, how we go about recycling that, which I'm sure that Ron can definitely work on.
I would say it'd be similar to how we recycle batteries, that was a program that kind of started slow, but people now come in all the time, drop their batteries off, they probably do the same thing.
And then we can talk with the construction, since we have a mind of that.
And Crush Recycling is willing, and, you know, we're willing to put out and provide documentation for the city and for the residents on the recycling, through education as well. So, I mean, we, we would provide that, and we're also looking to provide...
We'll do the content for the website and for the TV, so if we have that, that would be perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mike Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm Mike Martinez, I work for Dart Container Corporation. We are a large manufacturer of a variety of food service products, and I live in Atlanta, Georgia. I came down this evening, Dart makes foam food service cups, plates, bowls, we also make paper cups. If you know Solo Cup Company, we bought them back in 2012. We make all kinds of plastic food service products as well. And we've been recycling foam through our company and working with people like Crush now since 1990. It can be done, it is challenging. The interesting thing is, you say you want to make whatever contributions we can, we want to lead by example. We make paper cups. If you ban foam, paper cups will take their place. They're more expensive. In fact, we had our sales force walk around, they went to nine restaurants in Bay Harbor Island and they got seven people that they spoke to and they got letters from, or one letter that was signed by five of them saying, please don't ban foam cups, you're going to drive up my costs. By the way, you ban the foam cups, the paper cups come out, the paper cups are harder to recycle than foam. So, the irony is you don't drive up your recycling, you drive it down. If you want to lead by example, what you do is don't ban the product, but rather you look at ways, innovative ways to recycle. We have a program in our company called Recycle Pack. When you buy a carton of cups, you can also get a case with a UPS label. Put it in your break room, your small office in your house, when you're finished with your cup of coffee, drop it in there, fold it over, call UPS, they send it back to us. We also have a program called the Care Program. It's to large institutions, hospitals, hotels, colleges and universities, schools. They collect up the material, they crush it up with a densifier and we come pick it up. So, there are ways to do it in addition to working with Crush and I think that would be a win-win for everybody. You can help jack up the recycling rate and you can help your restaurants not have to pay so much. And I have a copy of the letter that I'll leave with you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'll be happy to answer your questions as well.
Can you pass the letter or?
How many restaurants sign that letter? I'm sorry?
Five.
Five restaurants?
Five out of the nine that we contacted.
Okay. Because when this came, first came up, the, the proposer mentioned that all the restaurants were on board.
I noticed that all.
I'm, sorry.
Well, you can, you can review the tape again, but I really didn't.
You're correct in this statement, I think that, that's fine. We don't have to.
All right, well, it is what it is. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to say right now that I've already spoken to Beato's and Open Kitchen and they were fine with it.
Well.
And I spoke to the owner of the mini mart and he was fine with it, so.
Because they're not now.
No, it is what it is. I mean, it's. Stacy Laurie? Yeah. So, you're going to say you need to come up to the mic and since, I'll let you speak since you handed these letters out.
My name is Javier Tito Elske. I'm in Northway Village. I did talk to them, the same people that you spoke, and after explaining to them basically that the foam is recycling and the difference in cost for the products, they decided to sign and.
Who did you talk to at Open Kitchen, number three, because I can't read the signature?
That's actually the owner. The Open Kitchen is the lady.
She doesn't use?
Yeah, Inez.
Well, I know who the owner is, but.
Yeah, Inez. She's actually a friend, a personal friend of my sister. So, when she saw.
One of the first ones I went to. I'd like to know what is the cost difference? Are we talking about a penny? When I went to the mini mart and the owner there told me that he was looking into it anyway, and I think he said it was $20 for a case difference and he was thinking about going to it anyway, so, you know, and I spoke to Inez then and the other day I was at The Bistro and I talked to Omar and he said, we don't use anything styrofoam in here, so, you know, I think the bottom line is that we're just getting away from it anyway naturally.
Stacy?
Stacy Laurie, 9271 West Bay Harbor Drive. I support this. I think that styrofoam can be recycled, as I've heard, but it is not easily recycled and especially in our town. And based on our recycling, I can speak for my own bins in my town though. People are confused about what goes in recycling and what doesn't and how to separate it and we're definitely way far away from, from what they do in the, on the West Coast and what they do in Europe, okay? We don't even separate our glass colors here. So, I'm afraid that it really won't be recycled and I, and as you all know, a lot of time in the water, a lot of time outside and in the woods and all over, and there is styrofoam everywhere and it doesn't go away. And, you know, saving $20 on a case of cups as opposed to saving our, our earth, to me there's no question, I'd rather spend an extra quarter or an extra dollar on a cup of coffee or bring my own mug. How about that concept? That's what they do in Boulder where they're very green. I think we should support this and I think that if we can work with these people, because you do, I brought for dinner, I take something home, it comes in styrofoam, I'd be more than happy to put it in the right recycling bin and have something done with it, but I think here in Bay Harbor, we can afford to pay the extra, you know, few cents, whatever it's going to cost us to, to make sure that we are not spewing that into our, our world. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Vincent Martino?
Vincent Martino, 1050 93rd Street. I'm a member of the, I'm the chair of the Environmental Impact Committee and we do support the ban on styrofoam. I know it's a very topical issue going on tonight and there has to be, probably should be some leeway with, with both sides and, and try to work it out, but we do, I think we all agree that we want our town to be litter-free as much as possible and reduce the elements that can find its way into the water as we are a water-based community. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Luck?
Susan Luck, 10180 West Bay Harbor Drive. I've spoken on this last meeting. I also support it and I think for another reason, which is by example, similar to having more trees in our community, I think it's a message that goes out to our residents. We have a school here, they're going to hear about it, they're going to be curious, maybe we can even have a project at the school of why we're banning this from our community so that as citizens, as they grow up, they can also think twice. There are lots of options now besides paper. I mean, there's even recycled corn and products that, that, you know, party companies are offering. And I think that the point that it takes, I don't remember if it's 25,000 years to break down styrofoam, it doesn't get broken down just to the last person's comment about paper, it's hard to break down also, not in the same way in, in landfill. And, and the last piece is, I think that, you know, when someone was here at the last meeting that talked about, he cleans up the bay and he goes around on kayak and the most, other than cans, it's styrofoam containers that, that are lurking and floating along the shoreline. So, I really support it as an initiative for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan brought up something interesting.
Frank, actually, I have a question for you. How, if at all, does this affect the school?
Doesn't.
If at all, because do the, do the agreements, okay. Just making sure. That's it on that item. All right. Any further commentary or discussion from the council?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in briefly on, you know, perhaps this might be better handled as a resolution rather than an ordinance because, you know, if the, the people that are direct, most directly affected by this are the restaurants. And if the restaurants, you know, five, 50% of the restaurants say, this is going to affect my business and they, it says here, I urge you to please support voting down this ordinance, then, I mean, if it's the wishes of the council for us to control styrofoam, then perhaps we should do it by resolution to cut down on the enforcement of it because if there is, you know, a, a mini mart or a pizza place that really relies heavily on, well, nobody relies heavily on styrofoam here because it's just a small island, there's only nine businesses. You know, I think maybe we should, rather than have an ordinance, that maybe we should do a resolution.
I'd like to address that, Mayor.
Correct.
It's important. I mean, I, I really don't want to debate and call people out on this list, but of the five names on here, I talked to the owner of the Bay Harbor mini mart and I don't, there's a scribbled signature here. I talked to the owner of Open Kitchen, we'll, you know, debate on that. Number two, Beato's, which is spelled B-E-double-T-O, not one T like is on here. The person you have down here, Sal, is a manager who I believe his first night was a week ago tonight and the person I talked to was Eric Druckman, who is the owner of Beato's. So, Sal is a manager who's only been there one week. So, that's three out of five of these on your list. I can tell you, I did not go to La Parisian, so I don't know. I, I really didn't think it was necessary because as I went along to many other places like The Bistro and the owner Omar, who I mentioned, and the owner of the Unico Cafe, who was mortified and, you know, we're, we're done. But I just, if, if you're voting tonight, colleagues, and you're using these names here, please, you know, take that into consideration.
Excuse me?
We'll speak from your, from the gallery.
I, I, I want to say something. I, I, you know, I am a businesswoman myself, but there's a, you know, and if you own a building and the fire department come and tells you, you have to hardwire it and it's very expensive, then you know what? You have to do it because it's, it's for the people who live in your building. It's the same concept. We are a small town with nine restaurants, but this is for not just the restaurants, but for actually the people who live in the town. And it's taking a stance and saying, you know, I, you know what, I want to do something for the environment, for our children and for our town, that maybe will cost us a penny or two more, but in the long run, it's so worth it. Our, our waterways are worth it, our streets are worth it, our air is worth it, it's just worth it. I mean, that's my opinion.
Probably saves us money so we less clean up in the bay.
No, don't talk. No, you're done.
Well, I mean, you know, I, I have some questions because I wasn't here at the last meeting, but, I mean, I, I, you know, from my understanding, because I read, you know, what, what we got, it said here, it said other municipalities have adopted some ordinances. Is, my understanding and this question is for Frank, is this the first ordinance that bans it or is this, or have other municipalities banned this in restaurants? Because I want, I, I didn't understand that part. My understanding was that this was a new ordinance, that no one has done this, so.
In my survey, I didn't find any others.
So, this is not true, that, 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 that maybe they've done somewhat similar to the extent where they've, they're not supportive of it, but no one has actually banned styrofoam from restaurant use that you can tell?
You weren't here at the last.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, but at the last, we did discuss that, that.
That's what I'm asking.
Miami Beach and other cafes, they haven't banned it, but.
There was a gentleman, there was a gentleman here who was a major proponent of this in Miami Beach, there was even an article about him in one of the local papers and they were phasing it in and it wasn't a complete ban in the city, but.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, Miami Beach has, has discussed that at their functions, they're not going to allow it.
Right.
But they haven't.
Businesses.
They have not said to the businesses, you cannot use this.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm saying. I just want to.
What they've said is, is you can't use this if you are serving the municipality's interest.
So, this is the first municipality that you know of that would actually restrict a business from, from using this type of product?
To my knowledge.
Okay. Now, let me ask you another question.
General area.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm sure you're not looking in, in every single state and every single county, I'm just saying, you know, from, from the extent that Frank looks, yeah, you know, because I, from what I read, I didn't, I didn't actually read that. You know, my next question is, is also the substitute product because, you know, I, there's a clear indication, I don't think anyone is going to deny that this type of product is probably, you know, we all know this isn't the greatest in the environment. Obviously, you don't ever want to put it in the bay or any type of waterway and obviously, you know, recycling it if it's possible is certainly the best course of action or not using it, choosing not to have that product, like Stacy said, you know, bring your own cup, you know, that's, a lot of people do that, we do that, so, you know, I understand that. But my concern is the substitute product. You know, one of the things that, that I guess was alluded to maybe two months, but I wasn't here at the last meeting, was that the substitute product was perhaps even worse and was not able to be recycled. And I, I wanted to know if that was discussed at the last meeting because the product that, that was, I guess, discussed two months ago was this paper product that had a lining where the chemical that it couldn't be broken up, so in other words, that the paper product was really not paper and it couldn't be recycled. You know, I, you know, you want to be green, but you don't want to pass something just for the sake of feeling good if the substitute product that they're going to use, whether it costs more or not, I don't think that's really the, the biggest concern. I think the biggest concern is that they're not going to use something that's even worse than what, than what you're banning. And so, was there a discussion about that?
I can, I can tell you, there's a Green Restaurant Association and when you go down to the Chamber of Commerce in Miami Beach, they use a clear solo-looking cup that's made from corn and recycled products. There's clear plastics, there are the black plastic, but there are a plethora of new substitutes coming on the market. And these styrofoam bans from places like Miami Beach, which is so much bigger than we are, their facilities are probably as big as all of the establishments in our town. They are starting out with, you know, phasing in a total ban, but they're moving in that direction, it's just that they're so much bigger than we are. So, yes, there are substitutes now and there are even better ones coming and this is going to help to push the cost down on the substitutes. And New York City for sure has a ban, I think DC had it. We may be the first ones in Florida, but, you know, I'm proud that we're going to be the first ones somewhere because, you know, there, there's no dishonor in, you know, not recreating the wheel and we see things all the time and, you know, it's, it's flattering to do that, but I'm proud that we're going to be possibly one of the first cities and I think we're the perfect manageable size and, and I, I just don't see the, the harm at all.
And I, I want to ask another question, I want to ask another question to Frank in regards to the, the legalities of this because obviously, like, like for example, you know, we passed tonight a resolution supporting banning plastic bags, bags, which is something that's moving through the state legislature, but I found it kind of interesting that we're supporting the legislature allowing municipalities like us to ban such a product, but yet, when it comes to this type of product, we can, all of a sudden, we, we have the inherent right. And so, I, I just want to ask Frank in regards to that because, you know, what, you know, did you have any concerns? I, I don't know if this came up at the last meeting in regards to our, you know, us being in this position, being such a small municipality, if perhaps maybe down the line, we might have some issues.
I try to draft everything that's as enforceable as humanly possible. I think that the town certainly has certain rights to regulate, but it could certainly be a test case as well. There's no inherent express authority provided for this. Who knows what the legislature will do tomorrow, but anytime you're first in line or you take a position or stand, you always have the risk of a restaurant, an affected party who can challenge it. And, and that's something you shouldn't, obviously, that's always something that can happen, but it's conjecture. I have no way of knowing whether that's the case or not.
I, I spent my summers in Great Barrington and they have, as of last year, they have a ban on complete plastic. You can't go into the supermarket and have plastic bags to bring your groceries and they don't use plast, you know, that kind of product anywhere in Great Barrington. And so, you know, the idea that we might be challenged or not challenged, I mean, I'm sure that although there's been not, maybe not bans on this, there's other cities, I mean, I know in Colorado, they have a ton of bans, when, in Utah, that we were just there also. So, the fact that, you know, maybe it hasn't been this particular product, it's been another product, shouldn't, first of, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't lessen our resolve to do what we think. You know, and each one has to decide for themselves, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't deter us from doing what we think is right just because we're the first or we might get challenged. I mean, if we, if everybody thought like that, we would be nothing in this country. I mean, we would just, we would just roll over. I mean, I, for myself, I'm going to vote for this, whether we get, we end up in court, whether somebody, you know, doesn't like it, so be it. We're not all going to like everything that we have to do, but I don't think that this is a harmful thing. I think it's really teaching, you know, it's teaching, it's teaching our children and, and, you know, our citizens that, yes, we care. We care about the environment. I mean, that's the bottom line. Do we care or we don't? That's it.
The council has taken positions in the past on items which have led to litigation, not that many, but a few, and you know what? You have to do what you think is right and in the best interest of.
That's right.
You know, the residents and the businesses, you know, the, the whole, the whole community. So, I think that's what you, you know, you can't deflect it. Speculative as to whether anybody's going to sue you, I don't care, you know, I mean, unless we can.
Twenty dollars more for cups.
We can't legislate based on the concern that somebody's going to sue us if we think what we're doing is correct, right?
Knock on wood, we have a great track record.
Right, right, we do have a great.
We do have a good track record.
The only question I have about this, I mean, I'm going to support it, but, you know, if this goes in, if we pass this on second reading tonight, then it goes into effect when the ordinance is signed. So, the only question is, most of the businesses that are in town, I guess, you know, they don't have huge quantities of this material, but is there any phasing?
When I asked, when I asked Inez at Open Kitchen, I said, how much time do you need? You know, should we give you a few months? She said, Kelly, I order containers weekly. So, I think a month or two would be fair.
Have it sixty days.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, if you think sixty days, two months is.
I would say thirty days or something.
Yeah, they never store that much, no, no place wants to store that much.
But, you know what, maybe just towards, just to give them enough time also to allow our code enforcement and for.
Does that have to order replacement materials if they're not going to be able to use styrofoam?
Right, but until they find exactly, you know, I want to give them, do you want to say May 1st, like, you know, kind of the new laws and stuff that go in?
Sure.
How about as of May 1st? I mean, how does that?
I don't know, I mean. Is that all right, Frank, in terms of adding an effective date?
Yeah, I can add that in. That doesn't affect it on second reading.
Did you?
Can I make one quick comment?
Yeah, just come on up, come on up, and then you can fill out the paper afterwards.
I wasn't going to say anything, but if you're doing it.
Name it out of, I'm sorry, Kenesken thirteen ten ninety-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I built that in. It's a hundred eighty days upon its passage.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I apologize, I did this so long ago.
I was only going to say, if you, if you do it with the restaurants, please add in the food trucks that come around. I have them in front of my house all the time, they're walking across the street, the guys are forever leaving styrofoam in front of the house.
Ken, it's already in there. It's a part of it.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Workers leave, garbage all over the place. All right, so, any other questions, comments?
A hundred eighty days, that's, six months. I didn't catch that, actually.
Yeah, section five of the actual.
Yeah, I see it now, but I didn't catch that before.
The time is sixty or ninety?
Yeah, I think, I think ninety days is plenty.
June 1?
Summer's coming.
Or just June 1, just to start the beginning of the month of June 1?
Yeah, I think so. Or if ninety days is easier for.
Does that have a problem, Frank, if you change the effective date, to second reading?
No, I don't think that's problematic. That was actually taken from Miami Beach's ordinance, or actually their first resolution, second ordinance, with regard to the phasing and the sunset, giving people the ability to go through their present inventory. It's less of an argument, less of a challenge, if you're allowed to use the inventory that you have.
So I think the hotels there have more of an inventory, the restaurants don't should keep that much, that's the difference. So May, so May 1, if we.
Yeah, so I'd like to amend the motion that, you know, effective May 1.
A second. All right. All in favor? Pouse. Thank you.
Item ten, consideration and approval of an ordinance on first reading amending the town code, section thirteen dot thirteen, point thirteen, to allow garage sales to take place outside of a building in an area not visible from the street.
Ordinance of the Town of Bay Harbor, Orleans, Florida, amending section thirteen thirteen relating garage sales for land for counties, for land for several people, for land for certification, for land for effective date.
So move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pouse, houses.
Item eleven, consideration and approval of an ordinance on first reading amending the town code, section twenty-three dash twelve, fifteen G one, to allow properties on the RM two to construct pools, pool deck, and pool equipment on the street side yard of a corner lot.
Ordinance of the Town of Bay Harbor, Orleans, Florida, amending section twenty-three twelve fifteen GX, G ten, to allow properties in the RM two multifamily district to construct pools, pool decks, and pool equipment on the street side yard and corner lots for land for property, for land for several people, for land for certification, for land for effective date.
Your motion? I'll move it, is there a second? I'll second for discussion. Now, if you drive up and down East Broadview Drive and West Broadview Drive on the West Island, on the non-waterfront properties, there are a good number of homes, because they don't have backyards, like I live on the interior and I have a backyard where I have my pool, they couldn't put a pool on their properties. And I don't know how many years, it's probably been about ten to fifteen years since the town first permitted single-family homes to put a pool in their side yard, which really faces the street, it's not facing directly another property owner, another home. And to give them the same right type of pool that other properties have, because these corner properties are different than the other properties. And so the question was put to me by somebody who's building on the West Island, excuse me, on the East Island, whether they could have the same thing, the same right as we do on the West Island. And in fact, ninety-eight seventy, East Bay Harbor Drive presently has a pool in the front yard, it's a corner property, so it already exists there, probably before the, maybe it's old before the code. So personally, I don't think it's really bothersome to people, because it's going to either face East Bay Harbor Drive or West Bay Harbor Drive, it's on a corner, it's not directly next to a neighboring property, and so I thought it's something that's worth discussing. That's my comment on it. Anybody else in the council?
Was this going to be only on corner property?
Right, it's only on corners.
Were we going to identify which ones, or I thought we were going to do some kind of a diagram or something to.
Well, if you look at, it would really be, I would imagine it would apply to any corner on East Bay Harbor Drive or West Bay Harbor Drive, or I guess the center street of Bay Harbor Terrace, maybe, I'm not sure, Marlene?
Yeah, the properties, the properties on corners have different sizes, and also they have two fronts, and they have other issues, but other problems that other properties don't have. So they're unique, just because they're on a corner.
Right, right. The same on the west one.
What about if it's a really large property that might eventually be like four, almost kind of L-shaped, you know, and like, sometimes on the ends, you know, those corners are kind of elongated, it's not like a square corner, and if you, so that means that you could put that pool, yeah, it would be in a setback, but if it's not on the elbow of the property, it might be on the straightaway, and, you know, kind of odd. So I'm just, I'm just.
And I think you'd have to look at the individual properties when plans are being presented, and, you know, I mean, planning and zoning, I would imagine, could look at those issues when a project is presented, but the purpose of this ordinance is to give those properties the right to do it without seeking a variance, I mean, they could seek a variance. You know, for some of the neighboring properties, I don't know, I don't know how bothersome, you know, pools are, I mean, certainly, even at the park yesterday, with all the kids playing in the water, there was a lot of noise. So, you know, you're going to have some noise associated with, you know, people, adults, kids playing in pools and so forth, but I suppose if it's facing the street, it might even be quieter for the neighbors than if you were in the so-called backyard and it's right next to somebody's property.
You know, I'm always reminded that it's not always the street level that's noisier, because there is a pool in the corner across from me, and the summit has one, but it's funny how sound rises. So at the street level, it's not bad, but, you know, like, my neighbors sit on their balcony a lot, and when you go over there, you can hear it.
Right, but I think, you know, that's true, but I think you're going to have it whether it's in the backyard, front yard. It says those properties may not be able to have pools at all, so the question is, do you permit them to have a pool? And that was my, you know, purpose in putting this.
They still have to have setbacks, too.
Right, right, they still have setbacks. Exactly. Right, exactly. Yeah. Right, so, all right, some comments? Gabriel Boano?
Just to add a little bit, because when this was done years and years ago, we made sure to draft the language so that these are angled configurations, corner lots. So we did that years ago to make sure they're the kind of lots that you want.
Right, specifically the corners.
Right. Hi, everybody, my name is Gabriel Boano, I live in ninety-four thirty-four West Broadview Drive. First of all, I want to clarify that the client that requests to have the pool on this corner, they don't want anymore, but even on that, I think it's a great idea. This is my second project that I do as a townhome on Bay Harbor. The first one was done on one hundred and second on West Bay Harbor Drive, and they have exactly the same situation, and I think it's a plus, and it's something that we can improve for this type of product, that I think is very good for the island, because we try to have a townhome, so I think it's one of the ideas, and to give the possibility to these small houses to have this setback pool, I think it's a, it's a good component. And also, like Marlene mentioned, and all the, all the buildings on the corner, they have a double setback. They, they have the front setback, what is the long part of the property, that is the twenty-foot setback, and the side setback is more than the rest of the, the rest of the property on the middle. Now, this is the reason that I think it's a, it's a good idea, it's a plus for this type of property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Francis Niuha?
Francis Niuha, ninety-nine twenty West Broadview Drive. I already said this the last time, every district is different, they have, and you mentioned the residential, the family on the West Island. How could you compare the West Island to multifamily residential, especially when you have families with kids, and multiply that by thirty-two units? I think that's disgraceful that this is even bringing, being brought up, because playing devil's advocate and only letting the RM two, I mean, what happened to RM one and RM three? I mean, isn't that being discriminating?
Just to interrupt, as Marlene said, they don't have corners, it applies to corners, so.
Okay, the Bay Harbor Inn doesn't have a corner, okay. But more importantly, there's a question with our laws and regulations of the town, and that is spot zoning. And according to the agenda item number eleven's description, it's a request from a residential developer in the town, a residential, that means one person. The second thing is, this same person on nine twenty-four two thousand and seven actually asked for an application for a variance to allow encroachment on the side yard setbacks. So it looks like there's a little preferential treatment here if this goes through, because you're allowing the same person who had to go for a variance the first time thinks he has the privilege now of now not having to have that. The other thing is our landscaping code. I feel this is an encroachment into our minimal landscaping code. We already have laws and regulations, the environmental, the, one of the committees, the environmental committee has worked for years on a landscaping code that you're disgracing with putting pools and limiting our setbacks even more so. And, you know, some trees are there. Did you know that tree removal shall be prohibited unless the tree is diseased or dead? I mean, if you look around this town, you think that we were giving away our trees to the garbage can.
Thank you, Mrs. Niuha, we discussed it earlier, that tree removal.
Okay, the point I'm trying to make is, we are really going down to minimal landscaping, minimal setbacks, and this is a perfect example of it with your spot zoning. Thank you.
Frank, there are landscape requirements, correct? You have a pool on the side, in the side yard.
Yes, there is nothing.
In fact, most of the properties that do, well, all of them, I guess, have hedges, fences, and hedges around the fences.
Yes.
And, and my only other comment is that, of course, this proposed ordinance does not identify one specific property. It would apply throughout the island to any corner property, so it's not the Gabriel Boano, excuse me, respect, Relief Act, it would apply to anybody on the West Island.
Can I ask you a personal question?
Yes.
With your twenty years' experience on this, on the town council, have you, have you ever seen a request for a pool in a side yard setback ever denied in your twenty years' experience?
Now, the first person to request that was Josh Dubin on the West Island, and I think at the time, he was not permitted by ordinance, and I think he actually had to negotiate with Shepherd Broad for, you know, some type of restrictive covenant to be able to do it, and once that pool went in, other, you know, similarly situated, you know, homeowners said, well, if he's got it, you know, why can't we do it? Because we would like to have pools. And so the town council, I don't remember when it was, you know, adopted an ordinance, providing that for those corner properties, so it's not even, you're allowed to do it, there's not even, you don't have to request it, you know, you pull a permit like you anybody else pulled in the pool. But prior to the adoption of the ordinance, if there was anybody else who requested it by variance or otherwise, it was never denied. That'd answer your question.
I think that Dubin's case was probably before my timing.
Right, I think so. Victor Maya?
Victor Maya, eleven fifty-five one hundred and third street. No matter how you cut it, this is special consideration for a single developer. That particular corner lot that is no longer wanting a pool or needing a pool has gotten extra special consideration. They are being allowed to stage construction on that lot, which is in the middle of a residential area for other construction projects. Trucks are being allowed to park in there without a written permit, as required by code, and there is no allowance for staging area on that particular corner lot that's being used, so that's special consideration going there. Secondly, this town allowed their pre-construction sign to be up for months without charging them the special permit for maintaining that pre-construction sign. They have since gone ahead and fixed it. Know and understand that they could put a pool on that lot, it can go on the roof. P&amp;Z just approved a townhouse project with four rooftop swimming pools. So there is an option that they have to put pools on those lots, so it's not like they're being denied an opportunity to put up a pool. Also, the way that this ordinance is written, it allows the town to define corners when they're not actually there, so potentially on those big curves, you can create a corner, and then you can allow these pools into the side setbacks. That is something that needs to be specially considered and should be prohibited. So all told, just because something is permitted on one side of the island doesn't mean it should be allowed on the other, there are differences. Francis is right on that respect. There are reasons why the codes are different, and things are allowed in one place and not in another. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have a question for Mr. Miller. He mentioned something.
I'm sorry, he mentioned something, I, he said that you.
Michael, please.
That you can create a corner, I'm sorry, because I, have I read this? You added, one, two, three, four, five, six words. So how in the world do you get, how can you create an additional corner?
I'm not, I'm sure, I'm not sure.
I mean, I'm sorry, I.
You can read the entire code, not just the change.
Well, you're adding RM two into it, and you're, and you're striking the words dwelling unit and inserting one-word building. That's all it does, so how can you, how can you create an additional corner? I mean, you're not creating a street, so is that possible?
No. No, you have a planted lot.
I know, I know.
So you're not creating, the reason the word was changed is because the ordinance currently allows the single family, which is a dwelling unit.
I know why, I'm just, no, 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 I know, no, no, I'm just wondering how you could, you know, you can get from this to that with just changing, including RM two and striking dwelling unit and adding building, because that, okay, because it doesn't do anything, okay.
You can't create it.
All right. Just one comment.
Thank you.
From the council, question, comment?
I don't understand.
Marlene?
Councilmember Ruder.
Four.
Councilmember Fuhr.
Four.
Councilmember Reed, opposed.
Four.
Vice Mayor Leonard.
Four.
Manayaki.
Four.
Passes.
Twelve on. Consideration and approval of an ordinance on first reading amending the town code to include a new section of regulations for demo permits.
Ordinance of the Town of Bay Harbor, Orleans, Florida, amending section five five point one, demolition of structures, for land for counties, for land for several people, for land for certification, for land for effective date.
Your motion? I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion from the council?
I'm looking at the demolition checklist that we have in the building department, and I was kind of surprised that some of these things weren't already in the ordinance.
Are there things in the checklist that are not included in the ordinance, is that what you're saying, the proposed order?
There's some things that were left off, because they're already in the code in different sections, like for the thirty-day sodding, that was left off to demolition, because that's already included in the code in a different section. It's still part of the checklist to remind people to do it, but it's in another section of the code.
Let me, let me ask you a question about that, because the sodding was a concern. Would it, you have to, you have to re-sod the property, but what if, what if they're actually going to build something in sixty days? So what do they do? They sod it for thirty days, and then they rip it all up, is that?
Yeah, I mean, the code is clear, if you don't start construction within thirty days, you're supposed to sod it. Unless you already have something active in the building department that's really close to the permitting, sometimes they get the foundation permit, and you may not see activity at the side, but they already have it, and they're already moving forward testing and things like that.
So they have a permit, then it doesn't, doesn't apply?
Right.
So that's really, so really, the sodding comes into play when someone's actually not.
Yeah, there's a law, and then.
Yeah, they're not, right, which, which makes a lot of sense, okay.
I'm looking at the demolition checklist that we have in the building department. And I was kind of surprised that some of these things weren't already in the ordinance.
Are there things on the checklist that are not included in the ordinance? Is that what you're saying, the proposed order?
There's some things that were left off because they're already in the code in different sections. Like for the 30-day sodding.
Yeah.
That was left off to demolition because that's already included in the code in a different section. It's still part of the checklist to remind people to do it, but it's in another section of the code.
Let me ask you a question about that, because the sodding was a concern. Would it, you have to, you have to re-sod the property. But what if, what if they're actually going to build something in six days? So what do they do? They sod it for 30 days and then they rip it all up? Is that-
Yeah, I mean, the code is clear. If you don't start construction within 30 days, you're supposed to sod it.
Okay.
Unless you already have something active in the building department that's really close to the permitting. Sometimes they get the foundation permit. And you may not see activity at the site, but they already have it and they're already moving forward testing and things like that.
So they have a permit, then it doesn't, doesn't apply? So that's really, so really, the sodding comes into play when someone's actually-
Yeah, there's a law and then-
Yeah, they're not, right. Which, which makes a lot of sense, okay.
Right, I mean, the town's had a number of property owners sod.
Sod.
Take down their fences, sod, you know, pull down the electric connections and so forth.
Yeah, right. Also, there was a couple of things that did not make it in the ordinance, because it was a little later, that Dale gave to me, additional things that Frank and I will look at and figure out the way to word it correctly and put it in the order. One of the things was putting talieuna gravel in the front so that they don't track down, track outside mud, mud, or dirt than necessary. And I believe I have the-
So what I'm going to put in on that second reading, is that what you're-
Yeah, that's, that's probably going to be.
Yeah, Dale, a building official. There was a couple of things that we've been putting on there to make our life a little more enjoyable. I've been requiring them to put a gravel bed at the entry to the site so that they don't track mud and dirt and debris onto the roadways, which is a real problem. We've also had, require them to put up a temporary toilet on site because we've had some complaints with, you know, without, without toilets. So we've added that to our checklist. We've also required them to evacuate the air conditioning systems, both pump the freon out and not let it escape into the atmosphere. There are several other things that we've included on Marlene's list and hopefully we'll, we'll get them in the next, the next ordinance.
Some question? Dale, I asked you about the asbestos survey. And you told me that it's all handled by Durham.
Yes, it is. We, we send them down to RER, which is now Durham. Durham was previously Durham. And they have to fill out the report and satisfy them that there is or is not asbestos. And they have their own guidelines for how to remove it. They monitor it and just provide us with the documentation that they've been down there and made their application.
Because I've seen the reports, but I haven't seen the follow-up to it. So, you know, most of these buildings, the 50s buildings, they all have some kind of asbestos, pretty much. So they mitigate it. I've seen the mitigation reports. And does, does Durham come on day one? Or do they have to inspect and sign it off?
All of the site monitoring of the asbestos removal and things of that nature. We don't, we don't get involved with that.
Dale, let me, Dale, let me ask you one more thing. I know this is not something for, in here, but I was going to ask you, I've had several residents ask me about, when there's a demolition, there tends to be a lot of junk that seems to make it still, you know, when they're loading into the trucks, taking it away. In the street, a lot of people have flat tires. Is there anything we can do to try and monitor it a little better? Just to make sure, it's mixture, combination between you and code enforcement, just to try and make sure it's kept a little cleaner when they're coming out? Because as they load that stuff onto the dump trucks, take it away, you know, residents are losing tires, left and right.
Well, I can't tell you how many tires I lose, you know, going around. But that is a problem. And that's one of the reasons we asked them to put the gravel bed there so that anything that's stuck on the tires and stuff comes off of the truck before it gets into the street. But we do ask them to sweep the street and hose down the swales and things of that nature. So it's, it's just a-
You know what we could do? You know what would be a really smart idea is, you know, for whatever fee, you know, you know, charge an extra $50, whatever, but require them that when they, when they get a demolition permit and they notice us that they're going to do that, that we use the street sweeper because it has that magnetic, you know, device in the front to pick up nails and stuff like that. So, you know, I don't, I don't expect them to have, you know, a type of machine to do it because we have one on site. So, you know, as long as they can pay accordingly to mitigate that cost, I think that whenever they do do a project like that, you know, hey, if it's going to be, you know, Tuesday at 10:00 a.m., guess what? You know, whatever time, we're going to already coordinate to have the street sweeper go by and pick up whatever metal objects. So that way, you know, and whatever that cost is, we just, you know, pass it over, you know.
No, I like that, I like that. The only thing is it's not, I think from least what I've seen is it's not so much from the demolition itself. It's from when they start to remove the material. And sometimes that takes a few days, but several times.
Whenever it's-
Just so you know, we, we hit it three days, three times a week. So regardless of whether, by having them when they pull the fat, the sweeper's going by.
But maybe it'll be done just to kind of keep an extra eye on it. Other people complain that they're losing tires.
Right, fine, so, well, they do, they do make a small portable magnetic thing. It's about three feet across, has two wheels on it that you mechanically pull down the street. A lot of roofers use it when they have nails and things off into the yard. They use it to pick it up out of the grass and stuff like that. So they could use something like that to run them down the street.
Whatever you can guide them, we appreciate it, yeah.
I just had a quick suggestion, since we're really, we're inserting this entire section into the code new, that, you know, early in the meeting, we talked about our aversion to work on Saturday. That perhaps we should add now with this new language, no demolition activity is permitted on Saturday and Sunday.
Well, Sunday's already excluded, you can't do-
Well, it says it. It says Sunday. So that's the question, so. Right. On Saturday, do we want to do it Friday too? Or just, or just, I don't have any particular aversion to Friday. But I think that, you know, Saturday and Sunday is the weekend for everybody. Usually it's starting on Friday and continuing over onto the weekend, so. Right. So if they can't do it on Saturday, no. Yeah, they'll have to stop on Friday.
I have a question, Frank.
Yes.
For somebody. Paragraph two, or A2. Proof of a notice of application for the demolition permit posted in a prominent location on the site for public inspection and proof of written notice to the owners of adjoining buildings advising them. So when is that, how far out is that notice to be posted? The day before, a week before, 30 days before? I mean, what type of notice are we giving?
Well, that's part of, it's part of the permit. I'm not sure, let me ask. So that's when you apply for the permit? It doesn't specifically say the permit.
Well, how long does that, I mean, I don't know how long it takes to get the permit. You go and you apply for a demo permit.
It's not that, I don't know, it takes more than a day or two to get the permit. But we can add it.
I mean, there's going to be some reasonable period of time, I guess, before the-
Usually your first indication is you have to have a fence.
Right.
Instead, with it already approved and signed off on, like it's, you have an approval, probably when you're signing off on the fence.
There were some properties that have been demolished, you know, like on East Bay Harbor Drive. I mean, you know, they went through a period of time vacating, you know, the apartments and then, you know, and they were empty and then it sat there for a while before they started, you know, the demolition process, before they fenced them off. I mean, it was apparent, everybody knew, you know, probably that those properties were coming down. So I was just curious, you know, if there's a period of time-
In A, it does say, "The following items shall be completed and submitted to the owner's apartment prior to the issuance of a demolition permit." There's no specific period of time on that issue, but we can clarify.
So if they have the day before, then they apply for the permit, they could post their sign and give notice to the neighboring owners.
I'm saying we can, yeah, we can specify a number of days or something.
Just curious what the intent was, that's all. I'm not even recommending a specific period of time. I just couldn't tell them the way of the grid. Dale?
Maybe a better thing would be to require them to provide us with a notice of commencement that they have, they have to do anyway. So maybe we could get it once the fence is up, they could, we could post a copy of the notice of commencement. And that gives the owner and the bonding company and all the recorded notice.
That's fine. You could do that.
Yeah, that's fine. A little different.
Yeah, the consensus? Is the rodent control, is that adequate? Do we need to be more specific? Or does it have to be a professional service? Or is there a certain number of traps? Because I have to tell you that the O residences, they've been very good about everything. And, you know, I was a little worried, the traps didn't come right away, but it seemed to me like they put a lot of them and we only had one rat. And the fixed feral cats got them.
Well, on the other side, we haven't had any yet.
Well, I mean, I think it should certainly be a professional extermination company rather than, you know, a self-help petting where, you know.
You go to Home Depot and buy two and put them-
Right, right. I mean, it should be a professional rodent or pet extermination company.
Standard.
Right, so that they know what they need to do. And we don't have to tell them.
Yeah, and I don't think you necessarily need to prove it because it says that the town manager may require it. So, I mean, they make it very clear what, what our standard is, so.
Okay, we have some public comment. Victor Maya?
Victor Maya, 1155 103rd Street. And I appreciate this as a start. It's a good start. And it certainly is moving in the right direction in terms of giving the current residents, you know, the respect and need, you know, to help with their quality of life. I am in favor of not allowing any demolition work on Fridays or Saturdays, especially when they begin on a Friday and they, you know, can't otherwise finish. We had an issue with demolition that started on a Saturday. You know, and it went into, you know, we had the issue with President's Day holiday and it was an illegal demolition and so on and so forth. So I think we just, you know, we need the peace and quiet. With respect to the actual provisions on the rodent control, I think that it should be very clear that we require it, you know, as soon as they put up, you know, make the first application that we want to demolish the building, start the rodent control and that it be affected. Proof that it's been done. I mean, to see a mousetrap and take a picture of it and say, "Oh, here it is", you know, that's, that's not enough. And it's not in accordance with what, what we're looking for. With respect to the asbestos and tree, we don't have anyone in the town to confirm that the asbestos has been removed per Durham. You know, we have Durham monitored it, they made the application and so on and so forth. But nobody actually checks, hey, yes, it's been removed before the demolition takes place. And it has been removed legally and per, per the appropriate regulations. The same thing with the tree removals. A permit is needed from the county for all the non-invasive trees to be removed. And nobody from our town checks, yes. Not that they applied for it, but they actually got the permission to remove it before we grant the permit. There's a couple of other suggestions I have here. I'll be more than happy to share with them, with you, when you want.
Thank you. Stacy Lurie? Yeah, right, Stacy's coming up. You sent us a copy of the demo permit today and I went through that page by page. And I, I mean, I know that there was something about pest control. I don't remember verbatim. And there was the Durham or the RER forms for asbestos removal. So each of those items that, you know, we've talked about over the last, you know, meeting or two, seem to be attached to that demolition permit, in other words, that the pest control was taken care of and that the Durham asbestos removal was taken care of before the-
Right, originally, we would send you just a copy of the permit and all the backup, we didn't copy into it, but now we do. We send it everything.
But do we, are we checking off that they applied or that they actually?
No, they have to, they have to supply proof before we give them that.
That they have removed the asbestos as per Durham.
Well, that's followed up by Durham, that's their monitoring.
No, my question is, okay, so I-
Nobody from the town is, does that. It's the Durham does that.
No, I understand that part. My, my question is, so I go down to Durham and I fill out the paperwork and they say, "Okay", and then I bring it back to you? Or is it after they've actually removed it that Durham?
And they have to bring that permit to us.
They have to bring the permit?
Yes.
Well, don't they have to have a professional come and do an inspection?
First is a survey?
A survey?
Yeah, absolutely.
So like, and O, they had asbestos there?
Right, and they had to remove it first.
Well, they don't always remove it. I think they can treat it and, you know, they have different ways of handling it.
Same at the point.
But I'm, I'm not sure who was, you know, ensuring that that actually was done properly. Maybe I'm missing it, you know, if it's just Durham. I don't remember ever seeing anybody from Durham there. I mean, I'm not there 24/7, but I've seen a lot.
Stacy, thank you. Stacy, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm hoping that the demolition will stop on the weekends too. But something that really concerns me, and I have to tell you that I never saw a sign for the one behind me, the one next to me, the one across the street from me. So that for sure did not happen.
This is a new requirement. It's a new requirement.
And a letter, the notice is good.
Yeah, nothing, but we got nothing. Okay. And the, and the other thing is, is that I can assure you that there is still stuff in the demolition on the property next door that has been sitting there. And the thing that concerns me the most coming up onto hurricane season is that these things are not being removed. And that they could be, you know.
Projectiles.
Projectiles, exactly. So I'm hopeful that this will be something that will be really addressed sooner than later.
I know that, and Dale can speak to this, I guess, but even on sites where, just on construction sites where there's been no demolition, I mean, the, the building department, when there's a warning issued, I mean, Dale, you want to explain that to us? What action is taken to make sure that contractors, you know, clear, right, building sites before, when there are storm warnings?
Yeah, we have a notice that we, along with code enforcement, we go around to all the construction sites and require them to, you know, hold their stuff down or put it inside the garage or do something. A lot of the construction material has to be banded. And if there's roof tile up there, they go up and they bundle it so that it doesn't blow away in a storm. But that's routine. We normally do that before, you know, anytime during hurricane season. We go out and visit every job site.
Thank you. Susan Luck?
Susan Luck, 10180 West Bay Harbor Drive. So I did not read the, I know there was a long proposed ordinance. I did not get to read it online today. So this may have already been covered. But we're talking about asbestos, because there's a lot of other things in the materials and we've talked about that before. The environmental committee had asked about lead at one time and a lot of these buildings coming down have, are before 1978 and have lead. And I'm wondering if in the same way that we're testing for asbestos, if we're testing for lead, which is the one that gets airborne and gets tracked into houses and is more a cause of a lot of especially developmental problems in children, that's why it was banned. I mean, this is real, you know, the amount of projects coming down. If you look at just between 101st Street and 103rd Street, those clusters of cottages and some of the other pilings, you can see the wood and the lead. And yes, the wood has arsenic because that's what it used to be treated with. But I think again, what can we do? We're talking about banning styrofoam. What else can we do with this massive amount of demolition to really protect the community? And, you know, people that walk. I took a photo the other day of, as they were demolishing on Saturday morning on the north side of 102nd Street, a lot of cottages and bulldozing trees. And I want to say, although there's a fence, there's always a door open on the fence where the bulldozer goes in and out. There happened to be a family coming, I assume from Temple, and they were walking by. And I just happened to be driving and I stopped and took a photo because I had seen not just the, I'd heard the noise from my apartment, similar to what Vincent described, but I also saw the plumes of dust. And whatever was in that dust. So one of my suggestions would be, how do we notify the community and have a timeframe so that if we know that there's a demolition on Monday, we can at least post it and let the neighbors know that there'll be a demolition? So we have the option. People aren't really aware when they're walking by a fence of what might be going on inside, as with this family who was obviously just taking a morning walk home. So that would be one, one suggestion. And the other is testing the materials. If that could somehow be left to the developer the same way we did when we said when you were taking exterior paint off, that we have a mechanism in place that we can be testing for it. And the last thing I want to say is that, and I know I'm out of time, but I know we only have one in code enforcement person and it's very difficult to enforce all the construction going on, let alone other things on the island. I took the opportunity to go to the police station and ask if there was a permit the other day. And one of the police officers was outside and we talked and he had no way of knowing. He didn't really know if that was legal or not. He didn't really know if that was legal or not. And I didn't have any recourse, and the town hall was closed, and I just went on my way. So I think all of that needs to be some kind of procedure that's in place.
Frank, could you address that? With the figure of the permits and how the police department knows?
Well, we're going to provide the police department or the offices on demolition permits, because that was the issue, whether a police officer would know whether a permit was current or what he was actually looking at. The police, I mean, so we would provide him with a list of all the active sites, so he wouldn't have to look at a permit. It would be provided to him from the police department through the dispatcher, and they would know by just calling in or having that list of references.
That there's a permit in issue?
Right. And just as every time someone needs a permit to work early or late, it has to come through my office, it's signed, and then it goes over to the police department, and they keep it at the dispatch.
So in closing, I would just say that we've already had so many buildings demolished, and after the fact now, we're trying to catch up. But I think it really behooves the town to get this taken care of efficiently as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, did we start that already?
No, we're going to just start that.
Steve Warnock?
And Ron, just for the record, Dan, I asked for that very same thing?
Yes, yes.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Good evening. Steve Warnock, address 1 Southeast 3rd Avenue. I just wanted to, first of all, say I think this is a good policy. I mean, a lot of these requirements are already in practice, and I know I have a couple of clients who were, who've volunteered to take on some additional obligations in advance of demolition that are now here in this ordinance, and I think, you know, for the most part, developers want to be good neighbors, and so, you know, at least the majority of developers want to be good neighbors, and so they're taking the actions that are required or being asked of them. I just wanted to confirm, obviously, prospectively, you know, this is what will apply to new demolition sites. There are some demolition sites that already have demolition permits that have already moved forward, and so I just wanted to confirm that, you know, this would not apply retroactively, you know, for example, proof of notice prior to issuance of the demolition permit, of the application being posted. I mean, it's already started, they're not going to be able to comply with those provisions. So I just wanted to...
They've already started their demolition, or they're about to start?
Um, I guess I'm just asking for clarification.
Yeah, and they can be good neighbors and notify them.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just saying, to the extent they're not, you know, to the extent there are some requirements that they're not able to meet, that this is not going to be applied retroactively if it's something they can't do.
Correct, it's prospective. The effective date is immediately upon passage.
Okay.
I mean, part of this is a reaction to the fact that we talked about this a couple of months ago, about instituting some of these policies, but funny that we really couldn't enforce it because it wasn't in an ordinance, and so now we're adopting it.
And just to be clear, my experience, my personal experience with clients has been they're more than willing to, you know, to the extent Dale or Ron, you know, asks them to do something that may not have been on the checklist, and they can do it, they're doing it.
Thank you. Frank, is new hot?
Francis Newhat, 9920, no, 1060, 1040. First of all, now, this is very self-explanatory as to why we don't have committees or members of the residents participating. We've had an environmental committee, impact committee, for I don't know how long, I even have proof of this, in 2006, them putting together an ordinance, a construction demolition, and they had Scott Die and Marcus Frankel speak to everyone about this. We have, we have the ordinance called Construction Site Operations. It's 10 pages long. I've sat in for maybe three years before this ordinance came about with the environmental impact, and now we have the town planners stating that we don't have a building code. It says here, a lack of regulations. That's full of speaking here on this ordinance. The reason why we asked for the ordinance to be looked at, and I wrote you an email, was because with the demolition permits, we were questioning whether they should be granted to a developer when a building permit has been issued by a building department and the TDR deeds are recorded at the Miami-Dade Property Appraisers Office. That's all we asked for. We asked not for a new demolition permit, which you're talking about, which, by the way, is altering the code if you read it properly, because what you do is you take an old code, which is the demolition, and you number it properly. You don't mix up the residents and everybody else and say, "We don't have an ordinance, and therefore, our town attorney has the right to come here and make a brand-new ordinance when we have it existing." All we wanted you to do was tweak it. We wanted you to first give building permits and report it, Mr. Watson, at the Miami-Dade Appraisers Office, the TDRs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Esken?
Ken Esken, 131099th Street. I just wanted to follow up. Kelly spoke about it a little bit, and Victor did, with the rat program. Now, if you guys don't have it on the south side, you're real lucky, but I'll let you talk to a half a dozen people on the north side who aren't real happy.
No, I'm talking, we're talking about the south side and the north side. They have a building in between us.
Oh, okay.
That's under construction. But, yes, we do, on the south side, we do have a little...
Are we requiring the contractors, because we were talking about it, are we actually making the contractors right now put traps on every single demolition project? Or projects that are already down, are we making, but they're not doing anything yet? Are we putting traps down there?
I can tell you, right now, we've been asking them, all the developers, to do that, and pretty much to a property, they've done it, and without, you know, pushing back or anything like that, now it's going to be in the code, so if for some reason a developer said, "Oh, I don't want to do it," or is reluctant, they can be cited and fined.
So they will have to...
So this goes into effect when?
Next month.
So this is first reading, so it has to come back for second reading in April.
Okay, have we followed up to see if, they said they'll do it, but do we know if it was actually...
I've noted that code and Dale make visits for that purpose, have inspected for that.
Without the ordinance, we can't, as Ron said, can't cite them, can't find them, and so forth. But so that's the purpose of adopting this in an ordinance form.
We are getting, we are getting a good amount of compliance. Are the traps supposed to stay, are the traps supposed to be there when they first saw it demolition, or is it supposed to be until they finish the project? Because you still have rats running around, and I think that's...
My knowledge was before demolition.
Yeah.
And then once the building was completed and everything was off the site, and there was really no requirement after demolition.
Well, you're saying one thing, he's saying the other. It's not the same.
Before and after, essentially, it's going to, it starts around...
It's not what the man said.
That is what he said.
For demolition. The demolition.
For the demolition.
I'm talking about the starting construction again.
He said before, during, and after, it stays the whole time.
Right, and once demolition is completed, I can't see the need is...
He's not saying, he's not agreeing with you.
No, but he is. He's saying, "No, he's not."
Okay, he's saying it starts beforehand, it starts before the building comes down.
Oh, do you mean rat traps while they're doing pilings? I'm not sure, once they start construction...
Who comes up?
They put them on a perimeter, by the way, like right up against the...
It's on a perimeter, they're not doing them in the center of the property. And again, you've got, I mean, if they're building townhouses, they're not building, they're not dropping the same, I'm not no architect, they're not dropping the same, or an engineer, they're not dropping the same pilings. You've got, you've got the townhouses over there, you've got, you know, the single families on our side. On 97th Street, they've had a pile of debris there for two months. That breeds rats. So my only point is, are they, you know, are they staying there? I mean, we should be keeping the traps there until they finish the project. I mean, people are screaming, I don't know if any of you have ever had that problem, but I'll let you talk to a bunch of people that I'm talking to, and it's disgusting. I mean, these are, we've got water rats when everything is wonderful.
So let's clear this up. If they're going to demolish, they set their traps. They demolish, those traps stay or go?
Once everything is cleared off the lot and, you know, construction starts, then I, it wasn't specified that they'd have to keep them for the entire construction.
Why don't we just change it to the entire period they have to have the traps? Just make it easy.
It's not if they're going to stop.
I'm saying, if they're going to actually do construction, like what Ken said, and there's actually going to be material there that has the possibility of breeding it, just require them to keep it if they're going to be doing work.
Until the building gets, what are you going on?
You know, it's easy to know...
It's fine, but you, this is not within the demolition ordinance, and you need to put that in another section of the building code, which regulates, you know, ongoing construction sites, not in demolition. It's a good suggestion, Ken, but I'm just saying, it doesn't go in this ordinance.
But let me ask something. It's still, you're doing construction, why is it not? You're not, you're understanding building.
Ken, this is specifically a demolition ordinance.
Right.
If you're going to amend the code to require, then we have to amend a different section of the code.
Right.
And that's fine.
Right.
We're simply saying it's not in this ordinance.
So one is demolition, and the other one is construction. There are two different areas of the code. So why don't we, for next month, put in something in the code?
In the construction side operations.
To require traps during construction.
And you know how you know, and you know how you know if they have a fence? Because if you're going to have a fence there, that's a clear indication, because, yeah, so, you know, that way you can correlate the, having the traps with them, do they have a fence? Because if they don't have a fence and it's completely sawed, then you don't need it, because there's nothing there. Which means they have the fence. Right, there you go.
All right. Marlene, would you?
Just one quick comment. Until this goes into effect, presuming that it does, can we have some extra enforcement on Saturdays to make sure? Can we make sure we have a code officer or some...
We have code work every other Saturday.
Every other.
Every other Saturday, and we have, the police department does one the off Saturday. If there's something specific, everyone changes their days off, but that's basically how we've been doing it.
I mean, I've been getting a lot of complaints. I think it's been consistent, every Saturday, we've all heard it. I know, you know, some of you have had to go out there, so I'm just saying, in the next month or five weeks, let's make sure that we pay some special attention on Saturday.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'm not going to require it, we work every Saturday.
Sure, and we have citizens call their police. We get emails sometimes, we get things through council members, but if they don't call the police when it's happening, and we don't have a report from the police department, we can't really cite them. The photographs that I get sometimes don't have any date stamp or timestamp on them.
At last one's meeting, everybody out there, you know, if it's on a weekend...
Or after hours, after hours or Saturday.
Yeah, I know there's two people here at least who did, you know.
I know, we're not saying that people don't, we're just saying if you have it, and you see...
Police.
Now, the police response, chief.
Yes, they do.
They're going to send an officer out, don't they?
Yes.
And they're supposed to. I mean, let us know if nobody shows up.
At the last special master hearing, we had two or three cases in which the police themselves had reported incidents of working prior to, or, I mean, after, prior to the actual hours that were allowed. In each and every one of the cases, there was a fine assessed. One was 11 minutes before, one was seven minutes before, one was 13 minutes before. Those three matters were all originated from the police department, and the special master issued fines on all of them.
Mary, to answer your question, each office is a geographic breakdown of a zone for their area of responsibility, per se. They go out every morning, they check their sites. Per the manager, last week, we did create a database, so all the demolition permits are on their laptops, as well as the construction permits.
All right, thank you very much, chief. All right, Marlene, hold up, counsel.
Councilmember Silver?
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Four.
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Councilmember Bruder?
Four.
Vice Mayor Leonard?
Four.
Mariah?
Four.
Thank you.
13, request for an extension to close an agreement to purchase and purchase and sale of TDR rights between the town and 1150-101 BHLLC. The contract was entered into November 12, 2013, for the purchase of three TDRs to be transferred to the receiving property located at 1150 101th Street.
Mr.?
Good evening.
Before we start, if they, if we do this, they have to then go under the new contract?
No, this is the new contract. It is in this contract, no, that's what we were talking about last time, when we did this last time, we gave the extension, but they have to pay the new price, but this is under the new contract. That's why they come back to us, because they don't want to lose the 25%.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Louis Saplaski, attorney of law. My office is 2450 Miami Gardens Drive, Miami, Florida, and I am here on behalf of the applicant, 1150 101 BHLLC. And as was stated, the TDR contract was entered into November 12, 2013, expired November 12, 2014. We're late. I'm speaking with our architect and contractor. It's, you know, they cite all the factors having to do with going through the bureaucracy with the county. You know, I just represent the owner, you know, so we have to accept what they tell us. We are aware that we're not the first applicant that's had the situation come up before you. It's been made clear to us that there's a new price structure. We're aware of all of these things, and we're asking the council tonight to grant our extension. Realistically, we'll need 60 to 75 days more to complete the work needed to get the public permit.
I have a question, maybe directed to you, Frank. There's the other two, I remember two other applications to extend. One, because of a scheduling issue in the part of the town, we couldn't get it done before it expired, so we gave it a 30-day extension. And the other one came before the council, a couple of days before it expired. And Frank, your default notice is dated February 12, which is some months after the contract expired, and I'm just wondering why there was that period of time between the expiration of the, the one-year period and the notice of default?
Sure, I wasn't aware of it. The second I became aware of it, we issued a default letter, just like we did in the other matters.
So it's just internal tracking, I guess, in the town of we missed this?
Can I ask a question? The folks that we gave the 30-day extension or whatever it was, they comply?
Well, let's put it this way, there has been one to date, you'll recall, they paid for it, they have a six-month extension, and they paid the difference in price. The way we did the, the way we did the amendment and the extension, if you will, was that they paid the difference in cash right away, and it was released from escrow right away. So you all have $65,000 in your pocket, even though that agreement did not close.
Frank, I'm pretty sure there were two.
There were two. The other one, when we issued the notice of default, as we were required to do, they were actually able to get everything done within the default period. So while you gave them the ability to pay, and while they were ready, willing, and able to do it, they actually did comply prior to the need for the extension.
Let me ask you, what is the difference in the price of each TDR? Because it doesn't say it in the agenda item.
Five thousand per, you just paid $35.
No, how much is the current rate? Because it doesn't mention it in the agenda item.
Five thousand more, it's 40. They brought it up 35.
Okay, because it doesn't say it in here.
I have no problem doing the same thing we did the last one, but they've got to pay the new price. I mean, that's...
So it's $15,000.
I think Mrs. Russ indicated it, I mean, that's a given at this point.
Yeah. Who knows?
We have deposit for this already?
Yeah, of course. Yes, as the new agreement.
25% deposit for it. Let me just ask you just out of curiosity, because I, this came up again, and the original, you know, Frank, you mentioned that originally, when you wrote the original agreement, there was, I believe you said, 18 months. Was that correct? Was it, it wasn't 12 months originally?
No, the original was not 12 months, but it tracked pursuant to where the project was. The intervening act that happened in those old agreements that has frustrated the town is the legislature, the state legislature, which keeps punting the ball, which is beyond our control.
I mean, because the reason why I ask this, because it seems, you know, it seems, to me, it seems fair that if someone wants an additional six months, if they're going to get to reset it at the current rate, that makes sense, you know? But my question is, is it unrealistic to give someone 12 months in order to do it? So in other words, you know, perhaps maybe we need to revisit the concept of how much time, and, you know, the way that I would look at it is, if we're already granting people additional six-month intervals, as long as they reset it, you know, maybe perhaps we should already have that as an exception, that if you want to come and get the additional six months, that you reset it and pay the additional amount, as long as they still only get one six-month extension.
Can you extend the original contract period from 12 months to 18 months, and then give them the opportunity to come in for another six months?
No, 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 that if they want, that you can get the agreement for 12 months, but automatically, if you want the additional six months, you have to pay up to the current rate at the date of your expiration of that 12 months.
But that's assuming the price changes. We had this conversation...
And we had this conversation last time. I think we decided we wanted to see on a case-by-case basis, because if you look at the last time, one of the people, one of the applicants came back, if I remember correctly, said they only wanted 10 days, and then we said, well, we'll, we'll give you, I think we gave them 30 days or something like that, um, just to be on the safe side. But if you give them an automatic extension, which could potentially cost them nothing if the price doesn't change, they're gonna take that extension.
Yeah.
And that's the problem.
Can I just, you know, I wanna, I wanna be fair, but you wanna, you wanna make sure that it gets done. I, I think that it's, everyone's best interested, if a project is gonna be approved, that it's, that we are going to see a project, not that they're going to be able to, you know, kinda run it, run it, run it, and we're never gonna get paid, and they're never gonna do anything. You know, I think there needs to be that, that consistency where we're gonna treat everyone equal. And I think that if we're.
I agree with that. I agree with that. They had a higher amount.
Right, yeah, that's, you know, that's the thing. We had two people come in front of us, asked for the extension, and we said, look, the price has changed since that time. I said, we might be consistent now. If the price doesn't change, and if they come back for a second, we haven't had anybody come back for a second extension. That, they take, and just so everybody knows, at their own risk.
Yeah, of course.
But at this point, I mean, if they're looking for 30 days or so forth, if he's now saying 60, I always stay consistent with everybody else.
Is this money in escrow?
The $26,000 is in escrow, yes.
Well, then I would suggest that we release it from escrow, given the, and you pay the difference and release it off to the town.
It's actually $26,250.
I would like you to release it off.
But that's what we did with the last, so I wanna be apples-to-apples, that's what I'm saying. So we're on the same page.
The last one, we required, and that was a substantial difference in price, which was $65,000, if I remember correctly. We, we treated that as a, as a, uh, as an extension fee, and therefore they paid that into your pocket right away.
Right.
Okay? Um, otherwise, there was gonna be a substantial amount of money at, at issue, um, but they've, they've moved forward with that. Here, and I think I said before, you know, we picked one year because the council wanted a use-it-or-lose-it provision. A year may be not long enough, um, but it's what we've, we had, and you've addressed it on a case-by-case basis, and folks have paid for the extra time.
Well, I would like them to use it or lose it, so I'm here to negotiate, and I would like you to release the escrow and pay the difference and give it to the town. And you have six months.
No, six months.
Six.
No, no, you, you said you wanted 60 days.
Well, 60 to 75 days. I'm not saying 75 days. Councilwoman Bruder, if that's gonna be your condition, that's fine, but it puts me in an awkward situation. You ask me to agree to spend my client's money without my client here today, it totally puts me in an awkward situation. It'd be better if you just impose that on us.
All right, I'll impose that.
But I think we should be consistent. If we're gonna offer someone the same period, we need to be consistent.
He's only, he's only asking, so it's 60 days, so I'll give him that.
Well, 60 to 75.
Okay, I'm gonna be generous. I'm gonna give you nine, my imposment is 90 days, release on the escrow, give me the difference in money, and let's, and let's say goodnight.
And I'm not saying that, and I agree, and just, just.
Yeah, I wanna be fair.
One of the things I, one of the things I like in being consistent here, and I think would help, the fact that what we did last time, I'm very happy to hear that the developer is actually hurried up to get the job done.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And that was the whole purpose of trying to say, look, you have this set time, there's no second extension, get it done, or you lose your cash.
Well, I can tell you, I represent the owner, I do not represent the contractor or the architect. We're cracking the whip to get this thing moving. I'm very sorry that I have to be here to ask for this extension. It's not what we want. We wanna move our project forward auditiously. Whether a year is, is really reasonable or not under the circumstances, not under the current public climate in the county, I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, but advocating for your client, there's nothing wrong with that. And that's fine.
Just so we're clear, what we did last time, okay? I, I just wanna make sure we're clear, so, you know, the discussion is, then we need to be consistent. In the last project, the difference in price was $65,000. They paid $65,000 cash to us for that six months. This would be $15,000 that they would pay cash to us. The money in escrow would stay in escrow. That's what it was done the last time. Now, if they miss the next default, we get all of that ourselves. Because otherwise, it may not be enforceable. If you're gonna keep the deposit and the extra money, and, you know, you're, you're, we're subject to a court challenge, and while I like negotiating and doing those things, it may not be as.
Let me ask you something. He can either lose it, use it, or lose it.
He can lose $35,000, uh, or whatever the deposit is, 26 to 50 today.
I just wanna understand something. If I negotiate with him, and, wait, wait a second, I'm asking the question. If I'm negotiating, and he, I have a commodity that he needs or wants, and I say to him, okay, I'm going to allow you or give it back to you or let you extend it, but it's going to, in negotiations, I say to him, okay, please release your escrow, I'm paying you the difference, and if they agree to it, where is the harm and the foul to that?
I don't wanna speak for him, but he just said he can't agree to it because his client's here.
He can't impose the condition of.
Well, I won't vote for it unless, you know, that's part of.
Then we're opening.
Look, I, I have always given you good advice. You've never been challenged, and every single challenge has been shot down, whether it's here, in the district court, or the third district court of appeal, and, uh, and in the supreme court as well. Um, I, I think that, in this instance, you're talking about 26,000 plus 15. It doesn't sound too bad, uh, but you're gonna have other matters in which 65,000 was paid, there was a bigger, um, amount at issue, and they paid it under protest. And quite honestly, that is a challenge that may have won in that instance. So I, I, I think that the way we did it in the past, uh, the way we're, if we apply it consistently, I have no issues with it. And quite honestly, if they don't, if they miss their next deadline, it becomes ours anyway. So it's a heads I win, tails you lose situation to begin with.
I think where you're coming from.
Even though we all wanna be winners.
I think, I think where we're coming from, and this, you know, it's going a little bit off the topic, but I don't think it's, it's relative to this specific case, is that I think if we need to change the percentages, and we need to change the, the deal moving forward, then we need to do it by being consistent, so we don't have a legal challenge, and I think that's where you're coming from.
Right.
So let's, you know, let's do this. You know, this is a separate deal. I, I am in favor of doing, being consistent with what we've already granted to the previous, previous applicants. But moving forward, if we can have a discussion item on the next agenda, um, dealing with what Councilmember Bruder mentioned in regards to the possibility of changing the percentages moving forward, that I'd be willing to discuss and, and look at that. And, because that's a totally, you know, again, you wanna be consistent, but if you're saying that perhaps maybe we need to change the percentages in, in escrow or percentages that can be, uh, taken, then that, that, again, being consistent, we need to change the rule.
You're telling it all during the contract, the form.
Correct. Exactly. And that's a definite issue should be brought out in action.
Just so I understand, so the initial contract, instead of 25% down, would be a larger percent down, so it's at risk?
Possibly, right. And I, and I'm, and I'm amenable to discussing it, but I, I, again, you wanna be fair, and we don't wanna have a challenge, but I think that's where, where you're coming from, what you want. So, you know.
We'll discuss that next month.
Sure. Quite honestly, um, we can change it to whatever you want. That's easy. I, I am very confident with this contract, uh, that whatever the case may be, it's fully enforceable, uh, including, uh, this extra pay percentage.
We can certainly have the additional $15,000 payment to you post haste.
Okay.
So 90 days, 90 days, 15,000, get it done. Is that, yeah, consensus?
I know, I know.
I just have to say that, that I think it's been an inordinate amount of time, and I wish you had come to us in November, when the year expired.
I also did not know. Otherwise, I would've, I would've been here before the tagline of safe and travel.
At the moment, is there a motion?
Yeah, motion, move, it's paid 15,000, 90-day extension.
I'll second.
I'm Victor Maya. Thank you. Victor Maya, 1155 103rd Street. And I think Mr. Simone and I will agree that the simplest, easiest way not to be challenged in terms of, uh, fair or unfair, this, that, and the other thing, is to just enforce the contract as written. Default, take your money and make them start all over again with whatever process he needs to. Uh, if he needs more TDRs, apply for them, go through that entire process, they'll pay whatever needs to be paid for them, and that way, there is no potential liability issue. Nobody can claim that something was fair or unfair. Just enforce the agreement that you have. It's a well-written, tight agreement. Most of the advantages aren't even to you guys. I mean, the mere fact that, that these can extend on even, you know, beyond what's, what's written because of, you know, state law and things of that sort, um, all these things are kinda built in to their advantage, and they're only, they're only losing 25% of something that they agreed to on prices that were, you know, two years ago. So enforce the contract. If you're gonna grant special consideration, I agree wholeheartedly with, uh, with Councilmember Bruder. I think they need to forfeit that 25%. And then in addition, I think they should put down another, uh, deposit going forward and, and pay, you know, the, the 15,000 or difference. But the easiest, simplest way of dealing with this is just enforce your contract. It's that simple. Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Marlene, do you need to poll on this? Oh, yeah. Poll in favor. Do you wanna pose?
One.
I have always said that opposing is opposing.
Sure, thank you.
Item 14, discussion requested by Councilmember Reed regarding the possibility of offering an incentive to residents who wish to upgrade their windows to impact windows by either waiving the permit fees or offering a discount on the permit fee.
I, I just wanted to check with you to see, um, how you felt about offering these incentives. I actually got the idea from a conversation I had with Dale Lee, and he thought it was a good idea, so he and Ron, you know, crunched the numbers a little bit to see what the impact would be, and, um, we talked about, you know, different stages of doing this, either, um, putting a window of time and having it sunset, or capping it, or maybe offering the incentive just to replace jealousy windows. It wouldn't be for new construction, it would just be for existing, and, uh, you know, I kinda waited till after the PACE program. We had our workshop and education, and I think it's a great thing for safety, for energy efficiency, and, uh, I think even, uh, the owners will find out that they'll save money on insurance and, and energy costs.
Would you do this in combination with PACE?
I, I wouldn't wanna require that they use PACE. We talked about that.
But I'm saying, but, all right, but not, not require it, but I'm just saying in combination.
It would be upside down.
Okay, as long as you make it equal.
They could, they could.
I have some questions for Ron about this, and Dale, because we're mostly really wrong. Um, you know, the building department is, is, uh, you know, just like any other department that, that you have a separate fund, you know, it has to be, and, currently from wrong, by, you know, state law, it has to be revenue neutral. So, you know, this poses a little bit of an economic issue, because, you know, if we budgeted certain costs for that department, and the fees are going to be paying those costs, you can't kinda like move the money around, so to speak. It's not like you can take the money from the, from the bridge, or the water fund, or the sewer fund, or stormwater fund. It's gotta be revenue neutral, and, and the costs associated with those permit fees is what, what covers those costs. So, you know, the, the problem that I wanna have answered is, you know, if, let's say hypothetically, that this has an X cost, whatever that cost is, and I don't even know off the top of my head how much money this would, this potentially would, would impact the department, you know, X has to be replaced by something else, or you have to lower your, your, your budget. So where I'm coming from is, I would like to see, you know, if this is gonna, you know, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, it's actually a good idea. I, my expectation is that you're gonna lower your budget, or you're gonna offset that cost to cover, to cover it, because that's what you're legally required to do. And I know this because, I mean, this is what I used to do. So, you know, my assumption is, um, you know, I'd like to see how that is gonna impact the department, because quite frankly, um, the one thing I don't wanna have happen is I don't wanna see this, the offset by other residents who are going to do other work and that requires other permits.
Because Isaac just pointed out to me, that's the two lines in this form, which are not built in. One is financial analysis, and the other is budget impact. That's what Jordan was asking for.
I can answer some of that right now, to put your mind at ease. We, we did look at the, how much we get in from four window.
How much replacement?
About $25,000.
Okay.
Primarily, that's for the newer projects, the bigger projects.
Right.
Um, it was a lot less for the, the single-family homes, you know, $4,000 or $5,000, and even less for single-window replacements. It was, it was in the hundreds of dollars.
What's the, what is the average fee? What is the average permit fee?
I would tell you, it's about $4,000 to $500 for, for a house. And it depends, again, so many, so many things come into, to play. What type of window, how many windows.
Right.
The higher up, if you replace your windows, high up, if you're in the, you know, in a tall building, you know, tall building, seventh floor, fifth floor, it's a different criteria, depending on how the building is actually designed, impacts, the, impacts the type of window you can use. To, to go to Kelly's point, she's covered a lot of things that we had talked about, that if you were gonna do it, I mean, primarily, it's the jealousy windows that are the dangerous window. I wouldn't say dangerous, but those are the ones that are more likely to be damaged in a, in a storm. It would probably add value to a property to replace those.
Right.
And if you aim just for those, and waive the fee for them, it probably wouldn't impact as very much at all. Any new construction, I would keep that out of the, out of the play, because that's the majority of where the fees do come in. And, um, you know, it would increase the property value, obviously, and all the other things, energy, insurance, all those things would be.
No, and, and that's fine, but just as long as there's an understanding from staff that this, and this is what I would like, because I, I think it's a good idea, you know, um, but, you know, I wanna be, I wanna do it the right way, you know, because this is, this is, it's very important, especially when you're dealing with, with, with the state regulation. So, you know, the way to do it is, I, I think staff should come back when this comes back next month, and they should tell us, you know, what is gonna be the, you know, they should pull the permits for, you know, for 2014, pull it for 2013. No, it's fine. And, and find out, you know, and, and say, this is how much it's gonna be. And then that amount, I want it taken out of that budget, and that will make it right, because then I know it's done the right way. And that, that way, you know where, where you stand with it, because I don't wanna see the cost offset from people, for example, if somebody wants to redo their roof, I don't think they should have to pay at the, at the expense of the jealousy windows. the expense of the jealousy windows, as much as I, I agree with the concept, and I think it's a great idea, I, I think we ought to do it, if you're going to do it, do it right, so if staff can come back and show 2014 and 2013, how much money was, was paid into the town coffers, and we, you know, we use like an average of the two years, and we just subtract that from the budget, and we know that that's how much we're going to, we're going to lose, then that, then that's fine, then we know where we stand.
Well, you know, that's, there was one there, which Alan, Alan wasn't feeling good, but traditionally, um, there's a few other, you know, fees are set, and they get charged accordingly, and that depends on the work that you do, and that's the, how the fee, how you come up with a fee, it's usually a percentage of how much the construction's going to cost.
Not wanting to cut this short, but, because we're not approving anything, is the consensus that we'd like to explore this further?
Sure.
Okay, so can you crunch the numbers, and back to the council?
Yeah, just, yeah, just, I'll have a little bit of that information for you, um, okay.
You say it's not a lot of money, and, and that's fine, I got nothing wrong with that.
Because it is a good idea.
And I kind of like the idea of maybe putting it like a pilot program for a year that would really push people, you know, hurry up, and...
And that's a goo, and that's, it's a good idea, but I just want to make sure we protect ourselves, because, you know, what's going to happen is, if you don't protect yourself, then you're going to say, wait a second, how, how magically could you take something off your cost?
Before we get to that, Susan Luck, Public Affairs.
Oh, we are.
And then Marlene can explain to us why we have this question.
Susan Luck, 10180 West Bay Harbor Drive, very briefly, um, I know you mentioned this is a possibility, I did go to the PACE workshop, I didn't feel that I was, it was appropriate for me, but I am considering putting in high-impact windows, um, we've been lucky the last few years, and I live in a vulnerable building, um, that has a lot of corners, and, and many people in my building are thinking to do the same, the buildings are old, and they rattle, and, um, they don't have a lot of strength, even though we have some shudders, so what I would say is, I think it's discriminatory to only focus on people that have jealousy windows, because there's people with regular windows that also are in need of changing them out, so I would like it to be for everybody, if you wanted to do a pilot within the first year, that we all have that opportunity, because many units in my building are interested, and I think if there was a cost savings, we might be able to get the building to do it, which would be, make it a safer building.
And, and, you know, you raise a good point, because when I lived down the street from you, I had jealousy windows, and I had windows that were not jealousy windows, it'd be kind of crazy to permit part of the apartment and not the other part, so that makes, you know, because how many homes have all jealousy, so I would agree to that, you know.
And, thank you, the last part of that is, I think it would incentivize people to change out their windows who were thinking about it, but if there is a financial burden involved, so it would really make the community safer, thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
Kelly, Pelican, Kelly.
Um, I, I had, wanted to bring this before you last time, but, um, missed the opportunity. Sally Hayman is, um, sponsoring an event, and had asked me to sit on the committee for the Pelican Harbor Wildlife Rescue Center, and I know, we, we've bought some seabirds there that are injured, and they've been doing a great job for 35 years, and they're having this event, so I'm already going, and I'm sitting at a table, but if we would, um, you know, you could see the other cities that are sponsored from $250 to $500, and some even more, I would just suggest that perhaps we could give $250, which brings two tickets, and, you know, maybe some of you are, you know, would like to go, Matthew and your spouse would like to go, that would be great.
It's a good organization.
Uh, and the event is actually on the 14th, next weekend at 6:00 PM, right up at the Newport.
Man, I don't have an objection to it, I don't have an objection. I guess it's within Ron's spend, discretionary spending.
Well, that's what I asked, but he wanted to tell everything to you guys.
No, I understand, I appreciate that.
No, no, it's, it wasn't that, any, anytime we donate, the procedure that we follow, that, that, that's why I ran.
That's a resolution, that's, that's...
All right. Well, can we do it tonight, then?
I would have done it if I could have done it.
Yes, we've done, Councilmembers have done that.
Yep. There's no objections. Council reports, I forgot last time, so, anybody, Kelly?
I have my file here. Um, I'll be very quick, um, the healthcare task force, I think you all got the email that we've been reelected for another three years, actually, all eight of the Beach High feeder schools, and the chamber's working very hard to make sure that we keep our costs the same, so that was really good news, and there's utilization available. Uh, on Saturday, Sally Hayman sponsored the Spay and Neuter mobile van to come to Town Hall, and it was very successful, I think we had almost 30, and Bridget was here, again, thank you very much. Um, you may not be aware, but the Environmental Impact Committee has chosen the beautification awards, you saw that?
Okay.
And, uh, I didn't want to leave Marlene and Alba out, because I wanted to say thank you very much for getting the agenda to us earlier and earlier, and this time, it was, you know, an extra week, which was really great, I appreciate it. And, and lastly, um, I'll be going to Tallahassee next week, as will Councilmember Fuller, and I've been taking advantage of those, are you going to be there next week too, on the 17th, I think? Um, Legislative Action Day. Okay. And, uh, I've been taking advantage of those Monday morning conference calls, so I've been enjoying that, so...
You were smart enough to put that, be on mute today, so it's in the background.
I did, and then a quick shout out to one of our, our best customers here, to Kenny and Maggie in Surfside, who love the restaurants in Bay Harbor, watch our meetings too. Okay.
Isaac?
Well, yeah, no, you just wrote, we're going to move reports up on the agenda next one, we're going to do a three minute...
Sure, we can keep stopping you right, three minutes, for Councilperson, okay.
Yeah, the Nomination Committee of the Children's Trust, um, you know, both the slate, uh, we have new officers, and I was re-elected to treasurer for...
Congratulations.
So, uh, and also, I, during my report, I presented the, the CAFR, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, now, for the Children's Trust, and, uh, we had a pretty decent year, we had a surplus of $2.6 million, um, which we're allocating to programming, and, um, you know, like, I guess Kelly and Josh, I didn't know you guys were going, but I'm going next week to Tallahassee as well, with Florida League of Cities Legislative Action Day, so...
And Helen.
That's it, keeping it short.
Jordan?
Yeah, uh, I attended the last League of Cities meeting, um, I didn't mention last time that, you know, we had the, the gala the, the month prior, but, um, uh, you can tell from the members of the council that attended the last meeting, President Burgess seems to, uh, is, uh, running with full steam ahead, so to speak, with, um, a, a strong, uh, year moving forward as far as his agenda, and the executive board's agenda, so you're going to be seeing some things that are going to be coming out for the League of Cities in the next couple of months, there are going to be, um, you know, what type of things that we've been working for, um, and, other than that, uh, I want to thank staff, really, for, for yesterday, um, it was really, uh, a, a, a very, uh, interesting and, and unique occasion to see so many happy families going to the park, I want to thank Ron and, and J.C., I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've called J.C., and just, I mean, when is it going to get done, when is it going to get done, and, um...
Going to counseling, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sure, I, you know, but I, I have to admit, um, you know, it, you know, we have to get some minor tweaks to it, but really, uh, it's a, it's a beautiful park, and everyone seems so happy, um, it's the kind of park that you would expect to be in Bay Harbor, and I want to thank, you know, I really didn't get a chance to thank yesterday, because, you know, you're frightened, everybody, you're nervous, but I want to thank all, all the members of the council that supported it, and the former members, um, you know, it's not a, you know, one-person thing, it really is a collective thing, and we all did it together, and I, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, um, you know, thank you, you know, because we, we actually did something that, you know, one day we're not going to be on this council, and you're going to look back and say, gee, you know, what did you do for your time on the council, you're going to look back at that park and say, you know what, I'm really proud of the fact that I was part of something to make something like that happen, and all of you guys made that happen, and, and other individuals are not on this council anymore, so thank you to all of you individually.
Josh, I'll keep it real short, first of all, same short thing, thank you to all staff and everybody as far as the park, it was a wonderful event yesterday in the opening. Um, I, I attended, uh, the, um, the Leo Awards Dinner, and I want to, uh, also, again, congratulate Officer Sullivan for her nomination, um, uh, the PACE program workshop, I was there as well, I, I thought that went relatively well, it was interesting, that's probably the best way to put it, and again, also, congratulations to Judge Zilber on his, uh, taking the road.
And just briefly, I attended some of those other meetings, I want to thank you all, all members of the staff as well, not only for yesterday, but we've had some really, I think Mary Dwyer maybe said, or, I don't know, somebody said that there are a number of recent events in town which have been excellent, um, and I really appreciate the efforts of the council members and the staff in organizing these events, and getting, you know, people involved, it's, it's really great for the community, and I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Mary, can I say something real quick, I, I don't do reports, but I just wanted to say, uh, people were, um, earlier in the meeting mentioning the TDRs, I wanted to say that, um, out of the ones that have been approved, three have completely closed, um, three on their payment plans, two have received extensions, um, one more, um, is, is coming up, and that's pretty much it, uh, well, this one, actually, four, uh, three received extensions, yes, um, we've collected $2.266 million today in the bank, um, $224,000 in escrow, um, so it's getting there, it's getting done, the ones that have closed do have dates filed with the record, um, in Miami-Dade County, and I also wanted to say that, uh, some residents were having some trouble with the software on our website to view the meetings, uh, we've created a YouTube page, um, the needs for this year are already set, and I'll continue to upload them, so, and I'll put somewhere on the websites, uh, websites a link to, that they're letting know that they're also on YouTube, which, you know, you have any kind of special software to see as anybody knows.
I think you also said you told me that we've ordered a new appraisal for the TDR.